Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Town of Poughkeepsie's regular meeting of the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board for October 19th, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we've got lots of people here tonight. Great turnout. Thank you all for coming out. First item on agenda, we'll do the three public hearings. The first item is the McDonald Heights Town Center. McDonald Heights Town Center will be known going forward as the Eastdale Village. Eastdale Village. Public hearing on DEIS, site plan review, special use permit, and subdivision application for the McDonald Heights Town Center project, Eastdale Village, a proposed mixed-use development including 288 to 350 residential dwelling units in apartments and townhouses, 85,000 to 180,000 square feet of mixed commercial development, recreation area and associated parking, 928, 932, 935, and 936 Dutchess Turnpike in Victory Lane, Zone MHC McDonald Heights Center, IH heavy industrial district, 60.87 acres. It's type 1 action, Meadowview Properties LLC, Kirchhoff Properties LLC, and Industrial Retro LLC owners. Good evening to the applicants.
Good evening, Chairman. Thank you very much, members of the board, and I want to thank the public for coming out to speak tonight. I'll walk you through a brief presentation. Some members of the public probably aren't as familiar with the project as the board is. Jeff will put a board up as well.
We have a board. I don't know if you want to focus towards the board or focus towards the public.
You're going to use this? Are you just going to use the board or are you going to use the ...?
Can we pull up the projector down?
Do you want to give an overview of the special procedure, though? Is that comfortable?
Before we begin that presentation, Mr. Wilson would like to give an overview of the procedure for this evening.
Okay, so what we're ... This is ... Well, the public review of the DEIS actually kicked off a few weeks ago with the release, the acceptance of the draft EIS is complete by the planning board and the release of that document publicly. I would encourage anyone who wants to see a copy, has not yet had a chance to review it, to check the town website where you will find a complete copy of the DEIS plus all of the appendices. What we're doing tonight is we're actually kicking off not only the public hearing on the draft EIS, but the public hearing on the site plans, special use permit, and subdivision applications that accompany that application. The board at the ... After the board has heard comment tonight, the planning board has the option of adjourned the public hearings, in which case they would kick over to the next month, or to, if the board feels it is, has received the sufficient comment according to how the members may feel, they may actually close the public hearing on the draft EIS. Staff will then recommend that they leave the public hearings on site plans, special permit, and subdivision applications open, and we would adjourn those to a future date. If the board closes the public hearing on the DEIS, that is not the last chance to comment on the draft EIS. The public written ... The public comment period, the date for receipt of written public comment, would then be extended out to November 1st. So those of you who may wish to speak and follow up in writing by email or US mail to the planning board, this tonight is not your only opportunity to comment. But we'll have to kind of wait and see, depending on sort of the course of the meeting, how the members feel with respect to whether they want to continue the DEIS public hearings or to close that tonight. If the DEIS public hearing is closed tonight, again, the public comment period would then end November 1st, at which point staff, along with the applicant and our consultant team, will then review the public transcript. We have a stenographer here tonight. All of the written comments that we received either prior to this date and after, and then we will swing into preparing responses to those comments as part of the preparation of the final EIS.
Thank you, Neil.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Obviously, we're here tonight to discuss the McDonald Heights Town Center. We're going to give a brief presentation for those people who have not ... Are not intimately familiar with the project, so that they can be aware of what we're proposing. And I believe then VHB, your secret consultant, is going to do a presentation on the DEIS. With me tonight is Jeff Kane, also of Kirchhoff Properties. Insight Engineering is represented by Jeff Cantelmo. Kara Whalen, on behalf of Josh Mackey, is here, on behalf of Mackey, Butts &amp; Wise. And VHB, the Towns Consult, secret consultant, is here to do their presentation as well, represented by Valerie Manostra and Wendy Halsberger. As Neil pointed out, we're here to have a public hearing on the draft departmental impact statement, site plan, subdivision, and special use permit for the McDonald Heights Town Center project. McDonald Heights Center zoning district was created some 10 years ago, in 2007, as a result of the town's comprehensive plan, and it was intended to implement that plan. Along with McDonald Heights, there were five other town center zones created in the town that have similar structures and similar development goals. The district itself, the McDonald Heights district itself spans the Dutchess Turnpike just north of Poughkeepsie Business Park and adjacent to the Lutheran Care Center. This shows you the location of the zoning in a broad overview. Obviously, you see where Poughkeepsie is, Arlington and Pleasant Valley. A closer view of the district showing the Poughkeepsie Business Park to the south, as well as the Lutheran Care Center to the west of the site, and residential development to the north and the southwest, flanked also by the Wapinjor Creek and the Town of LaGrange to the east of the site. The purpose of the district, and I'm not going to bore everybody with all of the details, was principally to create a walkable mixed-use neighborhood combining both commercial and residential uses and integrating them such that you create an environment where people would rather walk to a store or to a neighbor as opposed to getting in the car and driving. We've moved the parking lots in our application, as is required under the zoning, to be less prominent from Route 44, and in fact, even from the primary corridors within the project. And it's to promote a critical mass of employees and shoppers, in other words, such that you have enough people in the community and around the community to support the businesses, and the businesses therefore also support the residential component. And the recreational amenities, green spaces, and centerpiece buildings and the like are spread throughout the project so that they're usable for both the residents, as well as business owners, employees, and the visitors to the site. Project sponsors and design team. The property is principally owned ... The property owners of the application itself are Meadowview Properties and Kirchhoff Properties, and they're headed by Joseph Kirchhoff and Chris Dyson, and Mr. Dyson is actually here tonight. Mr. Kirchhoff couldn't be here this evening. He had other commitments outside of New York. And I think most people in the audience and on the board are familiar with what Mr. Kirchhoff and Mr. Dyson have done on previous applications, and what they've done in the community and their service to the greater good of Dutchess County. I'm not going to read all of these, but a lot of hands have touched this application. A lot of consultants, professionals have worked on this, both locally and national consultants. I've got probably 25 or so consultants that have actually touched this to help create the project that you're going to see. The proposed action, the development program itself is designed to meet the intent of the town center zone, and I think we've done so pretty effectively. Project includes about 120,000 square feet of non-residential uses, including commercial, civic, and institutional uses, for such uses as restaurants, personal service, professional and medical offices, financial institutions, retail, recreational, and even the daycare facility on site. We've included up to 390 residential units. 350 some odd units are in the residential buildings, which consists of elevated service, three-story apartment buildings, some walk-up breezeway buildings, and some townhomes. And then there are additional residences that will be available over top of some of the commercial uses along the Main Street corridor that we're creating in the project. There are numerous passive and active recreational opportunities throughout the project, available to the residents, patrons, and visitors to the site, and a large expansive open space with access to the Wapinjor Creek. All the infrastructure necessary for the project is either being developed or already available. Network of streets and sidewalks to make for safe pedestrian and vehicular, you know, travel throughout the project. We're accommodating public transportation and school buses. Stormwater management is going to be handled throughout the project site, meeting both the Towns and the DEC's requirements, and lighting and landscaping to soften the project and create a welcoming environment without having an impact on the adjoining properties. Additionally, water for the project. We're in the Towns Water District, and there is more than adequate capacity. You have a 5 million gallon tank immediately adjacent to the project site, a 30-inch main that comes down from that tank, and it feeds two water mains along Route 44, so water supply is certainly available for both domestic use and fire flow. Waste water facilities. We're planning on acquiring the Poughkeepsie Corporate Center's waste water treatment plant and expanding it and upgrading it for our purposes. We've been working diligently with the owners of the property to acquire the plant. They are certainly in favor, and I believe have documented their position of transferring the plant to us. However, we are not letting go of a couple of alternatives based upon some input we have gotten from the board. We are still investigating the possibility of conveyance of our wastewater through the Lutheran Care Center's pump stations and conveyance system, and ultimately, the Towns conveyance system to the Arlington Treatment Plant, or we have the opportunity to construct our own facility on site. The neighborhood itself. This next slide shows you an overview of the entire project. As you can see, most of the project is centered right around Route 44. We create a Main Street-type corridor here. This will be a signalized intersection. This is Route 44 here, with the residential-scale commercial uses storefronts along this Main Street corridor, with some residential and offices above. In this slide, you can also see a fairly expansive section of parkland that we're intending to be available to the public, giving access to the Wapinjor Creek. We have our parcel within the industrial retro site that we're proposing to construct a parking lot to allow access to the public to that parkland area. This is a blow-up of the west side, northwest side. We refer to it as the west side of Route 44. And here you can see in a little bit more detail, the ... This would be the signalized intersection. This wide boulevard, this boulevard's about 50 feet, which will be an amenity in the project. There'll be recreational amenities, passive recreational amenities, seating areas, and a small pavilion in this green entry road here, flanked by a mixed-use building on both sides. Then you have here, these are referred to as live-work units, where a store owner may have a store downstairs and live above that store. And the terminus building in this view is that darker roof building here. That's situated such that as you drive up this main road, that would be your focal point as you're driving in. The lighter yellow roof structures here are the elevator service multifamily buildings that are lined through here, separated from the breezeway-type buildings, the walk-up residential buildings, by a green space that's going to include a community pool, community center, kids' club, and playground. Aligning Concord Village Drive, we've situated townhomes that will help to soften the transition from the residential areas to the, in this case, we'll refer to it as the north, from the commercial core of the project. Along Route 44 here, you'll see two individual pads, one of which is occupied by a proposed daycare and the other by a bank. On the other side, the Main Street corridor is carried across, and the mixed-use buildings, similar to those on the other side of 44, would flank that Main Street corridor, and then again, transitioning to the live-work units, and then subsequently to the similar units, the elevator service corridor buildings that are shown on the west side. And again, we've lined the existing residences to the north with townhome buildings to help soften that transition into the core of the town center. The architecture. This is a rendering of what we're proposing for the mixed-use buildings that will flank the entrance to the project on all four corners. We've only got one slide in here, but where the architecture will be similar on all four corners and complementary. It will not be identical. We want this to feel like an organically grown community, reminiscent of a downtown that's, you know, in the northeast that was created over many years. And in these particular buildings, the ground floor is anticipated to be commercial and restaurant-type uses, storefronts and the like. The upper floors would be occupied by offices and residential uses. These are the live-work units that I was talking about, where a store owner may own the downstairs store and live above that store, and they're designed such that that vertical continuation of the property continues. And this is that terminus building that we referred to before, at the end of that westerly entry road, and at the moment, this is intended to be our new home when the project gets constructed. So the Kirchhoff Companies is currently planning on occupying this. These are the bank building and the daycare structures. Obviously, as freestanding, single-purpose uses, whatever bank or daycare ends up there, we would be tweaking the architecture to conform to what they need, meeting the Town's requirements in that regard. This is the breezeway-type building, the residential walk-up building. These buildings will principally be housing one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, and we think it'll appeal to singles, as well as couples and families. In this particular building, these breezeways here would provide access to the front door of all three floors of each side of the building. The first-floor units also have access at-grade, their own private access to the buildings. The top image in this slide is the proposed townhouse units. These units are basically single-family homes in clusters of four, with their own garage, their own front door, and, you know, they'll have their principal living areas on the downstairs with the bedrooms and such above. The lower slide is the corridor building that I spoke of, which we think is going to appeal to empty nesters. Principally, studio one- and two-bedroom apartments will be in these buildings, and there'll be elevator service, which will be very attractive to those looking to age in place. And those are the buildings that are on both sides of Route 44 at the terminus of the project. Some of the amenities that the project is offering, as you saw on the previous slide and on this insert, will have central greens in the commercial corridor, as well as central greens in the residential areas. There's a large green space here in front of each of the two residential buildings on the east side of the road. In the green space on the west side, the residential green space on the west side will have a community center, which will have amenities for the residents of the community, a pool, the kids' club that I had mentioned before. There'll be at least two playgrounds, one on either side of Route 44. And then the open spaces, I just clicked past the open spaces on the east side, will house walking trails that will not only be available to the residents and business users and visitors to the commercial uses, but also to the general public as well. In there, we'll have a pavilion, which could be utilized, as well as have access to the Wapinjor Creek, and then we'll be providing a dog park for use by the residents of the community and community gardens for them as well. Some of the additional community benefits that the project is bringing to the town and the region, as I mentioned before, right now, we're planning on upgrading the Poughkeepsie Corporate Center wastewater treatment plant. The design of those upgrades is such that it will be able to accommodate future upgrades to expand the service area and service other areas of the town. We are aware that there are some areas of the town that are in need of sewer service, so we're trying to help do what we can to try and accommodate that. The traffic control on Route 44, as I indicated, we're going to have a signalized intersection. It'll be coordinated with the Victory Lane intersections, such that we won't create any significant traffic-related issues with two signals so close to each other. And we're providing some interconnections to some of the adjoining properties so that other users will be able to take advantage of that signalized intersection, making access to Route 44 even simpler. The project's going to generate net positive revenue to all taxing jurisdictions from its inception through the completion of the pilot program, and as long as the project is occupied. The public parklands, as I indicated before, and open spaces, we're intending to make available to the general public with access to the Wapinjor Creek. It's going to be an extension of the existing greenway trail system, and will provide a recreation pavilion and picnic areas on the site. And then, even though the chairman kind of stole my thunder, the branding of the project, we've been working with Focus Media pretty extensively, and we have come up with our brand and logo, and the project going forward will be referred to as Eastdale Village, place to live, work, shop, and play. Thank you very much. I believe Valerie has a presentation on the DEIS that I think she'd like me to run through my computer.
Yes, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
If you bear with me a moment. That one.
Valerie, have slides also?
Yes.
Did he mention that the grade, the Cherry Hill intersection, would be helpful?
No. I was noticing.
Okay. All right. Valerie, I'll watch you. You nod when you want me to change the slide.
Okay. So, thank you. We're going to touch a little bit upon the environmental impacts and the DEIS. All right, so the direct environmental impact statement analyzed the various topics that are listed there, and they include land use and zoning and public policy, community and visual character, geology, surface water resources, stormwater management, water, sanitary sewage, solid waste, vegetation and wildlife, traffic and transportation, community services, fiscal and economic impacts, historical and cultural resources, hazardous materials, noise, air quality, and construction impacts. All of these topics were identified in the final scoping document, which was adopted on October 20th, 2016. What I'm going to do is I'm going to spend a couple minutes just touching upon some of the environmental impacts that are usually typically of concern to the community, or ones that we found that there are going to be some mitigation measures as a result of those particular impacts. So the first is dealing with the community character and visual impacts. What, as you will notice, as part of the presentation that Rich just ran through, that clearly the site would change from open fields to about two- and three-story buildings, which are similar in height, actually, to a lot of the buildings located on the neighboring properties. So for mitigation measures, the project was specifically designed to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, both in architectural materials as well as the scale of the structures. And the buffer areas and lower building heights are provided, especially in areas that are closer to the residential districts. So we have two examples here. This one is from Route 44 looking west. As you can see, the current conditions versus the future project. And then this is also looking also for Route 44 looking east. Now, the direct environmental impact statement also contains additional visual images, but these are two examples. The second thing I wanted to touch upon a little bit was the fiscal impacts, the potential projects. Right now, the project site currently generates about $130,000 in tax revenue. The project itself, once fully built, will be approximately, will generate approximately over $2 million in tax revenue, which will be a net increase of about $1.9 million from what it's currently generating. The tax revenue generation would be beneficial to the town, and the DEIS found that there was no mitigation necessary. The second thing was the schools. The anticipated school impact would be about approximately 56 public school children, which would mean an increase in the school district enrollment of about 0.7%. Again, the schools are anticipated to have the capacity for the new students, as well as the cost of the new students would be offset by taxes generated as part of the proposed project. So the DEIS found that no mitigation was necessary for this particular impact. The third impact I wanted to talk about a little bit was sanitary sewer, and as well, as you heard from the presentation before, Rich touched upon that. The project is expected to generate approximately 79,000 gallons per day of sewage waste. The Poughkeepsie Corporate Center wastewater treatment plant would need to be upgraded and expanded as a result of this project. The expansion to the treatment plant that is as is proposed right now is anticipated to accommodate the project's expected sanitary sewer flow with a design flow of 95,000 gallons per day. This would also accommodate the current, it would also, the current need from the corporate center wastewater, from the corporate center, as well as any wastewater needs for future growth. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Wendy, who's going to touch upon the traffic and
So the traffic study as well was, the scope of it was based on the approved scoping document, which included a detailed assessment of eight off-site intersections extending from the north at Colonial Knolls, down to the south at the Cherry Hill Drive intersection, and also the proposed site access intersections. The focus was also on the weekday AM peak period, a weekday PM peak period, and a Saturday midday peak period. And those periods are chosen, they represent the time periods where the adjacent roadway network has the highest volume and also associated with high periods of travel from the land uses at the site. So the primary focus of that study is to really look at the impacts to those eight off-site intersections, and one of the first things is to determine what is the magnitude of traffic that will be added from this site onto that roadway network. That is done based on, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a trip generation manual, which is the industry standard for determining the number of trips that will be added to that network during those three periods that we focused on. Based on that documentation, it was estimated that there would be 585 new trips in the morning peak period, 436 during that weekday afternoon, and then 397 during that Saturday midday peak period. And those are total trips, so that's a representation of entering and exiting trips at the site. So the next thing is to, again, then determine what that future condition would be. You could change that slide, thanks. That future condition, so we project volumes to what we call our design year, which is 2023 for this case. And that analysis that we conduct is based on the highway capacity manual software. There's a software, but it's the manual that has the procedures. And what it is, is a measure of the average vehicle delays at an intersection, and that's represented in seconds. And then there's letter grades that represent ranges of that vehicle delay. So I wanted to show this slide just so that people have an understanding of what those ranges and grades are. And you can see that a level service A represents very little delay, which is typically occurs at intersections that have very, very little traffic at all at them, which can sometimes be hard to find. And then, when you go up to the highest, which is level service F, at a signalized intersection, that's a representation of about 80, at least 80 seconds or more average vehicle delay. But an unsignalized, it's still representative of conditions that you would still have less than a minute of an average vehicle delay. So what we do is we analyze the existing conditions, and then we analyze a future condition at that design year, before the project, numbers or trips are added in, and then we do the future build condition, which is representative of the additional traffic at the site. And really, what we're comparing as part of that seeker process is we look at the differential between what happens before, in that future condition, before the site is there, and then the future condition after the site, the site is there, and we look for any changes in those levels of service or drops between, you know, a delay that increases so that you might have a drop from a B to a C. And those are the conditions that we're really trying to mitigate because they're considered an impact. So based on that analysis, if you want to switch, what the recommendations in that study found is the restriping of the Cherry Hill Drive and Arlington Square intersection. Right now, there's, the side street approaches both have a shared left turn-through movement and a right turn, a separate right turn lane, and we're recommending to have it be a left turn only and then a shared through right turn lane, which will allow for the phasing of those approaches to be concurrent, and right now, they're separate, which causes some inefficiency in the operation. So those changes and the upgrades to the signal would mitigate the project impacts. Again, Rich had already talked about the incorporation of a traffic signal. In addition, there would be turn lanes on Route 44, and then two-lane driveway approaches. And then, the next is that Victory Lane. He had also spoke about the coordination and updates to that signal to make sure there's proper flow between. proper flow between those two closely spaced signals. And he had also touched on some of the interconnections that are being provided, which help disperse the traffic and the distribution coming to and from the site. And more so, one of the connections, two of the connections are actually on Concord Village Drive, which does provide a public benefit for, that intersection is unsignalized at Route 44, so it does provide an opportunity for non-site traffic that's on Concord Village Drive to also utilize going through the site to access the Route 44, either traveling to and from at our main site traffic signal. And I think Valerie's got a few more slides.
And then, there's one other topic that we want to touch upon this evening, and that deals with historical and cultural resources. So, both Phase I archaeological and architectural investigations were done on the site, which means basically there were field tests done, as well as review of the architecture of the buildings on the site. The Phase I archaeological investigations did result in identification of seven different artifact groups. And the Phase I architectural investigations found, or one of the impacts of the, this particular project, is that the buildings of the Frank Farm complex will need to be demolished due to their central location on the project's site. The horse barn, though, of the Frank Farm complex will be moved and reused on-site. But part of the Phase I architectural investigations resulted in a mitigation measure, where Phase II architectural research will be conducted on 931, 932 Duchess Turnpike, as well as the Frank Farm complex. And the Phase I archaeological investigations also resulted in Phase II archaeological investigations, which will be conducted on the artifact groups that were found. Thank you. And that sort of concludes a quick summary of DEIS, and we'll turn it over to the town. Thank you.
It was good presentations. Like to open up the, motion open to public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to open to public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. I have a list of folks that have signed up to speak at this particular public hearing. If anyone has not signed up, I'll give the opportunity, after we go through the list, to see if anyone else would like to speak. The first person on the list is Larry Breslow.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing before he starts. The, as the applicant, we certainly will follow your direction. We're not anticipating responding to any comments from the public unless directed or asked.
No, I'm not going to ask you to respond to the public, nor will the board. The board will listen this evening. We don't typically comment on the things that the public is saying. We write them down, we take them into consideration, and then, as the public hearing process goes on, as those things get folded into the, to the plan as necessary, okay? What microphone is it? That one, okay.
Good evening. My name's Larry Breslow. I've lived in the town my whole life, but I'm here on behalf of my law partner, Marty Reppert, who unfortunately couldn't be here, he's attending obligations out of state. He asked me to read a very brief letter in regard to this project. Ladies and gentlemen of the planning board, your consideration of the McDonald Heights Town Center project is an important event for the town of Poughkeepsie, and really for all of Duchess County. The opportunity to approve the project as soon as possible should not be missed. You have before you the combination that every responsible local government waits for in real estate development. The project is world-class and state-of-the-art. The developer, Kirchhoff Companies, has a flawless track record, not only for design and construction, but for community-positive undertakings. The developer's principal, Joe Kirchhoff, is a lifelong member of our community, not someone from far away looking to build and leave. The project represents a significant increase in the town's tax base and in the attractiveness of the town, not to mention employment during and after construction. Though I am proud to count Joe Kirchhoff as a friend, I have many friends in real estate development, and am not in the habit of advocating for their businesses, and would not advocate for McDonald Heights Town Center if I did not believe it was a project that will make the town of Poughkeepsie proud and become a model for development throughout the country, county, excuse me, maybe the country too. I hope you approve the McDonald Heights Town Center project without delay. Thank you, Marty Reppert.
Thank you, thank you. Next is Peter Benison. If I got that right?
Is there any chance I can give you a little presentation of my own on the screen? Won't take very long. I'm just going to hook it up where Rich is.
How long is your presentation?
Five minutes.
Okay.
For most.
Okay.
Shall we try it?
Why not?
I should. Is there any way I can steal that HDMI cable?
You can't have the cable, but you can hook it up. It may not even be our cable, it may be his cable, I don't know.
Thank you. Maybe I can change something up here at the end of the HDMI. Oh, it doesn't matter, either way. I can do it either way.
I love it, this is great. This is good, I like this. If they have a little presentation, I think that's pretty good.
There you go. I'm okay. No, I'll take this one. Thank you. Oh, boy. Can you see this? Yes.
My name's Peter Denison, I've been here before, and I really appreciate the efforts that the planning board has put forth on this. This is, this was initially...
Hang on one second. You're going to have to hold the mic so it gets recorded, you're live on television.
Okay.
Yeah.
Want me to use this one, or?
That'd be great.
Okay. I've been here before, and as you probably have heard, I'm a lifelong resident of Duchess County, born and raised here. I too like Joe Kirchhoff, love this place, it's a beautiful area. You know, I have to tell you that I really initially looked at this thing, because, as you can see, right there with the little red button, I used to live there. I used to live right there, so I know exactly what's there, and, you know, I know the Havre Camps and the Franks very well. And we used to walk in the back there in the field, and it was really, you know, it was a lot of fun living there for over 10 years. We're now up on Hornbeck Road, we're not very far away, so one of our concerns was the traffic that was going to come forth from this. But one of the interesting aspects about a town center is that it keeps everything supposedly in one place, which is really kind of cool. You know, I love that, and the planning, in the master plan, the fact that you've got pretty much all of the buildings in one spot, you've got the stores and all of the other things that would service that population very well. But with the density of this population, you're probably going to be looking at over 1,000 people in one spot. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is this, this plant that they're going to be building out in order to accommodate the wastewater treatment. So, one of the things that I looked at, I took a drive in the back here, and I was looking at this property, and we have this, let's see if I can, I wish I brought my mouse with me, but there's this, this little wastewater treatment plant, which is going to be upgraded. And, you know, one of the things that's kind of interesting about this, if you take a look at the VHB report, is we're looking at currently 2,507 gallons per day, okay? Very little that's going into the creek. The average flow for 2016, 2,116. What we're talking about here is an increase, I understand this is all going to be treated wastewater, but we're talking about an increase as a result of 390 residential units to almost 80,000 gallons per day. So, we're talking about 2,500 to 80,000 gallons per day in the Wapinjors Creek, which is barely flowing where that outflow pipe is. So, I took a walk back there, and I was taking a look at it, and that is a really big concern of mine. So, the first thing I would like to recommend is that we perhaps consider more realistically the pump, as opposed to going into the creek. It's ironic to me that we would be creating this nice little greenway for people to walk around in a resource that's actually stocked by the DEC for the brown and rainbow trout, and the canoe trip, and, you know, we have a lot of things that happen in this creek. And I'd hate to see that creek be affected by a tremendous amount of effluent that's going to be dropped into the creek. You know, I've got pictures, if you even want to see them, I don't know if you do, but I've got pictures of where this outflow pipe goes. So, if you take a look here, this is a video that I took the other day, this just basically shows you what it looks like behind this wastewater treatment. There is the outflow pipe. You can see it's barely moving, okay? So, there was a concern, I believe, Peter, you had a concern about the flow here in this area where this outflow pipe would go in. The last time we had a meeting, I believe you had a concern about that. You can see it's really not even flowing. So, I reached out to Riverkeeper, and I asked them if they had any comment about it, and unfortunately, they didn't have enough time to look at it. But one of their biggest concerns is reducing the amount of effluent in the creek and also in the Hudson. The other thing I found kind of interesting was that the EPA is proposing to add, I don't know if you saw this, add Duchess County Creek to the federal superfund list. You know, it's a resource, it's just, you know, just underneath that bridge where Degarma Road is, people fish there. So, it's a tremendous amount of effluent that would be increasing in that area if you decide to allow this thing to be built out back there. I am not per se against this project. I think the project is well thought out, awful lot of input went into it. I am concerned about the traffic. I do believe that what's going to wind up happening is if we don't try to get these signals right, what's going to wind up happening is you're going to have people going Hornbeck Road, we already have a lot of people coming over now, that's a through street, and you're going to have people going through Salt Point Turnpike in order to avoid this big backup that's going to be right at that intersection. You know, when I spoke to Joe Conti, who's in my ward, I said to him, this is a long time ago, before this thing came about, I wish we could have this thing go into Victory Lane as opposed to coming out on 44. Now, I realize the other side, you can't do that, unless you actually have it come out on that other street where the nursing home is. One way or the other, with the amount of people in that, with that amount of density, you're going to need signalization. I don't see any other way around it. So, I understand that the purpose of this thing is to try to create in and out, so it reduces the amount of traffic. But the other concern I have is, and then I'll let you go, is the retail that's going to be there, that's going to be replacing, not replacing, but adding to the amount of retail that we have in this town. So, I love the fact that it's a town center, it's going to be important, obviously, when you're renting it, to have people who are serving that community. Clearly, in order to make retail work, you're going to have to bring other people in, other than the people that are there. We all know what's happening with retail. We all know what's happening with the internet. Amazon's eating a lot of people's lunch. I don't want to see this property wind up being just an apartment complex without any servicing and having people to come out trying to get what they need. It'd be great if it was all self-contained. So, when I originally saw the master plan, I thought, great idea, fantastic, you know? It reduces the footprint of the urban sprawl, and it keeps everything in one spot. So, it is going to be very important that that be rented properly, otherwise, you're going to wind up with empty buildings, which we all know we don't like. I mean, you know, I don't know what that building is on Creek, not on Creek Road, but on the way to Duchess, we've got that enormous building there, and it's like nothing, there's nothing in it. So, one of the things that I would love to see is, I would love to see this done the right way.
You want to buy it?
Go ahead.
You want to buy it?
No. No. So, there's, there's a lot of, I did a lot of calling, and I've spoken to the county, I've spoken to a lot of people around here, Neil, you were very, very helpful. I originally hated this thing, because it basically takes away farmland, which no longer is being used. We know that Franks aren't farming it anymore. But it's being thought out properly. The other thing is, the three-story buildings, what's that going to look like? Does anybody know? You know, if we can keep it a two-story, that's great, which is going to increase the number of buildings you're going to have, right? You're going to have a lot more buildings if you go two-story. So, from that standpoint, I don't know what it's going to look like. Maybe up against that hill, it'll be okay. I don't know if you're talking about three-story on the other side, but I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good presentation. I like, I like the fact that you brought that that way, that's good.
Yeah, that wastewater treatment plant that's there right now, that thing is shot, you know? It's going to need, well, it'll have to be replaced. You know, there's, there are really great wastewater treatment plants out there right now, but, you know, I don't know, the biggest challenge for a planning board is, when you put 1,000 people in one spot, where are you going to put the waste? In the creek?
We're fully aware of that, believe me.
In the creek? I mean, come on, let's, let's not put it in the creek.
That's why we have public hearings, and that's why it's a work in progress, though.
Is it possible, I don't know what that pump, where's that pump station go? Does that pump station go eventually into some tributary, some river, or some stream? Does anybody know? I know this isn't question and answer, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time in putting that together. Joanne Fernandez?
There's probably going to be more people than you're rich.
Joanne Fernandez, Duchess Turnpike?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll come back there. Greg White?
I'm Greg White, Controller for Adams-Ferica Farms. Following is a letter that Pat Adams recently sent to the planning board. Speaking on behalf of Pat Adams and Adams-Ferica Farms, I'd like to provide support for the project. Realization of the project would create the following benefits to the community. The project will attract more people, local businesses, new housing options will be created for our employees, as well as the potential for new residents to the area, an increased tax base for the town of Poughkeepsie and Arlington School District. Kirchhoff Companies have a proven history of providing quality projects in the area and a commitment to maintaining them. We look forward to the Route 44 corridor enhancements in both appearance and attraction to the area. Pat would again like to express his support for the project and request that you approve it.
Thank you.
Okay. Joanne Fernandez, come back.
I'm here.
Oh, good.
Hi. I feel like I'm the bad guy. Hi, my name's Joanne Fernandez, I live on 974 Duchess Turnpike. I've been there for 37 years, and, like I said, I feel like I'm the bad guy, because I'm just really having a hard time grasping and wrapping my head around the traffic, the impact that this is going to have on the traffic on 44. I mean, I live basically across the street from Lutheran Care Center. I noticed that they did a crash impact that they investigated, but there was nothing said about how many accidents have happened from people pulling out or going into the Lutheran Care Center, which has been quite a few also in the past, as long as that facility's been there. You know, and just coming here tonight, I recorded on my iPhone how long it actually took me to pull out of my driveway at a quarter to six to get down here, and I don't know where the 70 seconds or the 40 seconds are coming from, but it took over two minutes, two minutes, 15 seconds to get out of my driveway, just to come down. And quarter to six is really, I don't think, considered peak anymore, around 44, usually it's like around 3:00 to about 5:00, 5:30, and then it kind of calms down. I'm just not understanding the traffic flow, I mean, how this is going to really impact the problems that we already are experiencing now on 44 in that basic area. now on 44 in that basic area. So that's my input. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, all right. Could we have your contact information? I was going to talk, after the meeting, I'm going to talk to the traffic people. Maybe we can get a little better explanation if you want. So if you could just leave your name and your address or phone number with the secretary, I'm sure Carol would like to take it. Okay, Lori Dean?
I assume I don't want to do anything, we're just talking, right? Okay. Lori Dean, my husband and I live on Darrell Place. Been there 23 years. I've lived in this county my entire life. I'm a little disappointed I was unable to ask questions. I didn't realize that. But, so instead of asking questions, then I'll just make a couple comments. One of the things, I also have known the Kirchhoff family all my life. I'm actually related to them by marriage through my cousin. And I do know they're a good family, hardworking family, always have been. Everybody knew the Kirchoffs. I grew up in Pleasant Valley. We all knew the Kirchoffs, right? So this is not a personal thing whatsoever against Joe, his family. It's personal to me because I live on Darrell Place and this is going to affect my, what I presume is going to affect my quality of life. One of the things that Joe did do that I really appreciated was he sent a couple members of his team out and put it out to all the local residents to be able to have a one-on-one and sit down and talk and talk over our concerns, et cetera, which we did. Came to our house, had a nice long talk around the dining room table. And I'm trying to understand what the purpose of that was and what change it affected and what Joe's takeaways were from the feedback that he got from the residents. So I wish I was able to ask him that question because I would. Of course, I'll, I can ask him anytime.
Well, you actually just did because they will give it to you.
Yes. I think, you know, it'd be interesting to me to understand the feedback that came back to him. What did he think about it? What did he do about it? Did anything change? Because I will tell you, as I look at the presentation tonight, I don't see anything that changed. So I don't know what the purpose was to reach out to us other than, I don't know, tick a box to satisfy the planning board, you know, show concern but not change anything. You know, so that, you know, I'm just real curious about that, you know? Was that the purpose of that? Because I don't see any change. What I see is, and we do fully understand and respect that, and the expectation that this land will be developed. We don't, we don't, obviously, we even said, you know, to his team, you know, we understand that, we expect it, we get it. This is your business, this is what the town wants. We know nothing that we say is going to affect where, okay, we're not going to do this. We know that something's going to go in there, we do. But the sheer scale of this, I find obscene. It's huge. It's like you take, it's the old, how much stuff can you fit in a five-pound bag? I'm sorry, that's just the way I view it. The scale is huge. And because it is going to affect my quality of life, because I live on Darrell Place, it's going to affect through the project, through the construction of the project, it will affect with the dirt, the noise, the traffic, the everything. And then for the rest of it, you know, once it's completed, it's going to affect my quality of life. I don't know how I'm going to sell my house. My husband and I are pretty, you know, we're pretty close to retirement and we don't plan on living here for the rest of our lives because frankly, who can afford the taxes on our retirement income? I don't know, who's going to want to buy my house? Who's going to want to buy my house if I want to sell it in two years and all this construction's going on? Who's going to want to buy it with this monstrosity, you know, right next door to this really nice little dead end? I just don't get the sheer scale of this project. I think it's ridiculous. But that's, that's my opinion. I also am concerned about, now, I keep hearing that the taxes, there will be no tax effect to the local, the Town of Poughkeepsie taxpayers? The project will be self-sustained and it won't affect our taxes?
Sugar down.
Well, one would hope. One would hope. Because I'm concerned the value of my home's going to go down seriously. I really, I can't imagine somebody wanting to live right next to that when you consider the, you know, the small dead end that we live on, right? So this is, this is my concern and this is the only thing I ask of the planning board. Do any of you live right near this potential project?
No.
No? Okay, that's right, you can't answer my question. I forgot, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to put you. But think about it. Think about living next to this huge. And the other thing I found interesting tonight in the presentation was the estimate of 56 school-aged children. With all these residents, you honestly think there's only going to be 56 school-aged children? I don't know where, I don't know where that data came from or how that was calculated because that just, it just doesn't sound right to me. I mean, you have to think today, how many people, due to circumstances that people are living under right now, how many people actually share homes now that have multi-families in single homes because that's the way people have to live around here?
Get through the calculations.
And I guess my last point is, I'm concerned about the green space, although I think it's a really nice idea. I'm concerned about how it's maintained, who maintains it, how it's policed, what's going to prevent people from being there after dark, what's going to prevent people from sleeping there, what's going to prevent people from littering and, you know, partying back there, you know, after dark? So that's another thing concerned about is who's going to police that green space? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. James Tuttle?
Hello, my name is James Tuttle. I live at 1218 Duchess Turnpike, right on Route 44. And one of my concerns above the project is the expense of taxes, school taxes. I've lived there for 33 years. My taxes are two and a half times what they were when I first moved in. And this may impact that again. And also, the traffic, every year I've lived there, the traffic has increased daily, almost daily on that street. There was a sign that was for rent next to Stewart's and it said, 10,000 cars pass this sign daily. That was 20 years ago. What is the traffic today? I'd like to know what that is. Can anybody answer that? And then you're going to add how many more to that? I'm really concerned about.
We'll get that information, but we're not going to answer questions tonight. It's being recorded.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. All I have on the list, is there anyone else that came in and didn't sign up that'd like to speak?
Yes, sir.
Your name, please?
Chuck Agro.
Spell your last name?
A-G-R-O.
Okay, thank you.
I live at 925 Duchess Turnpike. And that, when you look at the plan, we saw the plan on the screen, that big swatch of trees next to the site, that's my property. There's three things that I was concerned about. I'm assuming with 390 units plus stores, that they're probably looking at over 1,000 parking spaces, I would assume, because you're going to want, you have to assume at least 1.5 to 2 cars per unit for each family, two people going to work or one person going to work, one person bringing the children to daycare or school. And then I'm assuming you have these stores that you're putting in, that you're going to want people to stop and shop at these stores, not just from the facility itself, the community. So I don't know with that many parking spaces and that many people living there with that many cars, how you come up with a peak of 397 Saturday trips. It's less than the people that are living there.
I think that was an increase, wasn't it? That was an increase?
That was an increase. You're adding almost that many units and you're not including the shopping. There has to be more trips than we're listing here. It's a deadly street already, we all know that. We've all discussed the traffic. We know it's a traffic problem. I'm having issues with the numbers that you gave as far as the increase in traffic trips. I have two other points. One is quality of life. What wasn't discussed was light pollution and sound pollution. That big swatch of trees, for the most part, is open for animals. There's a lot of deer, a lot of animals that live there. And it's a buffer for a lot of the community. It's been a fairly rural area. It's dark at night, you can see the stars. With all these businesses and all these homes and this play center, I'm anticipating noise, I'm anticipating lights, I'm anticipating the sky to be washed out. It's going to cripple quality of life for that entire area. And I live next door, so it's going to be even worse for me. And the other is the community center that we've discussed. And it's part of the plan. Even the park across the street, it's isolated. The community that this is set up for are the people that will be moving into these townhouses and these apartments. The community itself, it's already a town center. That hill, if you're familiar with the hill on the farm, has been used by kids in this area for generations for tobogganing, for playing in winter, for their dirt bikes, whatever it is. They're over there now and all that's taken away. And they're really not being given anything else. What I was expecting was an ice skating rink, something that the community, besides the people who live there, could use. And I'm not seeing that. What I'm seeing is taking down the trees, putting a walking path and a pool that those people can use. So it's an apartment complex. I get it. I understand that the tax revenue would be great, but I have issues with the noise. I have issues not with just the noise that's going to happen during construction, which is going to be a nightmare, and the lights and the traffic during construction, but after it's populated. What living next to this thing is going to be like and how it affects the community that actually already lives there, not the community that's moving in. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Breck Martin. I live at 15 Darrell Place. Been a resident of Town of Poughkeepsie since 1961. Been a resident of Darrell Place since 1978.
Please use the mic.
Oh. Never had a problem projecting before. Do you want to start again?
It's being recorded.
Okay.
And televised.
Okay. Breck Martin, resident of Town of Poughkeepsie since 1961, resident of Darrell Place since 1978. My business was in for 30 years here in the Town of Poughkeepsie, just a few hundred yards from where we're standing now. My wife taught in the Town of Poughkeepsie for 34 years and the residents and the children of the residents here. So I do think I have a vested interest in the Town of Poughkeepsie. And again, quality of life are three words that have come up over and over again this evening. That's one of the things I want to address, is quality of life. I think most of us chose to come here and continue to live here in the Town of Poughkeepsie for those three words, the quality of life. This is where we want to live. This is where we want to send our children to school. This is where we want to shop. This is where we want to recreate, okay? This project is a huge, huge change to the quality of life, at least for the residents in my area. Darrell Place, Thomas Avenue, the entire area, Hornbeck Hill. And I have a few things, I spent quite a bit of time going through this draft of the impact statement, and I wanted to address a couple, three things. In Section 2, Page 1-5, which is headlined, "Community Character and Visual Impacts." Well, the potential impacts are, I'm quoting this document, quote, "No significant impacts to community character are anticipated," end quote. Well, I'm going to have, if the proposal goes through the way it is right now, a three-story residential building 15 feet from the edge of my backyard. I think that's a little bit of a visual impact, okay? I won't be able to see beyond my backyard more than 15 feet. So that, to me, is a little bit false, okay? In Section 10, they talk about traffic, transportation, pedestrians, and transit. And again, I'm going to quote, "Darrell Place westbound approach to US 44 would drop from LOS E with 36 seconds of average vehicle delay to LOS F with 71 seconds of average vehicle delay during the AM peak hour," end quote. And then they go on to say, "No mitigation is recommended." Interesting. Just wait. You'll get to turn eventually, but most of us on Darrell Place have to go right to our Pleasant Valley and go around the block to get to go toward Poughkeepsie. No mitigation, though, is recommended. In Section 11, they talk about community services. Again, I'm going to quote from the document, "Proposed project could generate 822 new residents at full build-out and occupancy," end quote. Well, how about the increased demand for police, fire, emergency, deliveries, garbage, contractors? The list goes on and on. But I don't think there was any mitigation that was recommended in that area either. In Section 15, they talk about noise. And I'm going to quote, "Local ambient daytime noise levels during construction could be intrusive," end quote. Could be intrusive? Five years of construction could be intrusive? I think so. How about air quality, which is Section 16? Again, another quote from the document says, "Air quality in the area is not expected to be substantially affected by the project construction," end quote. Interesting. We're going to develop this without having any expected substantially affected people in the area? We can't even hang our clothes out on the line, you can't wash your car. When we had Alpha Val discharging out of their smokestack, you had to re-wash your car, you had to re-wash your clothes. Could you imagine the amount of dirt, soot, and carbon monoxide emissions and everything else that's going to be as a result of this five-year construction project? Going on, Section 17, "Construction Impacts." Again, another quote, "Construction of the proposed project is anticipated to include five phases and an overall construction period of five years." I guess I don't have to speak to that. In Section F, which is the summary of alternatives, they talk about Alternative 3, which is reducing from three stories to two stories. Great idea because, ladies and gentlemen, there isn't a three-story building from Arlington all the way to the Pleasant Valley line, okay? But they quote, "It is the applicant's opinion that the benefits of Alternative 3 do not outweigh its potential impacts." In other words, I guess three stories are fine. We can block everybody's view. In Section 2, the description of the proposed action and project under Project Phasing and Construction, Page 2-8, another quote, "The project would be phased to provide supporting infrastructure and avoid unnecessary disruption to the existing and new community during construction," end quote. I hope, I hope if this goes through, we hold their feet to the fire because I really don't need any unnecessary disruption to the existing residents, okay? In Section C, the geology, Page 3E-4, another quote, "The proposed stormwater management facilities on the project site will be owned and maintained by the applicant." Interesting. Continuing the quote, "The applicant must allow the town access to all permanent stormwater management practices and grant the right, but not the obligation, to maintain all proposed permanent stormwater practices to ensure long-term operation of those practices," end quote. They also talk a little bit about wet ponds and subsurface infiltration systems. Interesting. I think we shot down a couple of other contractors who wanted to develop this because the town did not want to be in the business when their little stormwater management group goes out of business and all of a sudden the town has to take this all over, okay? We also talked about sanitary sewage in Section G, titled, "Potential Impacts as a Result of the Project." Another quote, "A private sewage works corporation would be created to own, operate, and maintain the wastewater collection and treatment facilities," end quote. Interesting, a private sewage corporation. Let's see how long that lasts. In Section J, under Traffic, Transportation, Pedestrians, and Transit, I think we've already talked about that enough. However, on Page 3J4, under the Crash Analysis, again, another quote, "Crash data for the 1.5-mile section..." 1.5-mile section of US Route 44 from Cologne Mill Moles to Cherry Hill Drive was obtained from the New York State DOT for the latest three-year period, September 1/13 to August 31/16." Excuse me. A total of 77 crashes occurred on this section of US Route 44. Of the 77, there were 45 injury crashes, 24 property damage collisions, eight non-reportable incidents, and no fatalities. I'm hoping we don't have to have fatalities for people to wake up and understand that uncontrolled intersections is not the way the town should go. Lastly, on page 3J-5, "A full buildout is estimated to generate approximately 580 new vehicle trips during the weekday morning peak hours, 436 during the weekday evening, and 397 trips during the Saturday midday peak hour." Again, ladies and gentlemen, I'm just going to stress quality of life. That's why we all live here. We send our children to school here. We shop here. We worship here. I'm hoping that we don't do something foolish to compromise our quality of life.
Thank you. Is there someone in the rear, in the back? Yes, sir.
Good evening.
Your name, please?
Good evening. Hello?
Hello? Is it working?
See, when you came up, Jeff decided not to work.
I got the Jeff.
There you go.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Senft, S-E-N-F-T, and I come here tonight as representative of the Dutchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce, as I'm on the executive board. I'm also on the co-chair of the Legislative Action Committee. I have a letter that I sent earlier today to the board. I'd like to read it now if I could. As a member of the business community, I am pleased to support the creation of McDowell Heights Town Center project in the town of Poughkeepsie. The economic development potential of this project is tremendous and will provide the town with much-needed tax ratables at a critical time, where additional revenue will positively impact the quality of life and checkbook of town taxpayers. The expected assessed value of the land increased from about $2.8 million to $40.2 million was among the criteria reviewed in the awarding of a pilot agreement projected to generate $3.5 million during its term. That's a huge number that we can't ignore. Consider the pilot's beneficial benefit to Arlington Central School District, which received $20 million, $6.1 million for the town of Poughkeepsie, $5.65 million for the Arlington Fire District, and $2.45 million for Dutchess County. Those funds are significant and are well beyond what the undeveloped property could ever offer. And the project will also generate new sales tax source for New York State and Dutchess County. The proposed project is clearly a smart-growth, planned, walkable, and commercial residential neighborhood that creates a lifestyle where people can live, work, and play in a pedestrian-friendly environment. Yes, the town of Poughkeepsie has the opportunity to be a leader here in the development of communities like this in New York State. But more importantly, the town has the opportunity to seize the moment and show how important smart growth can be legitimately paired with substantial revenue enhancement. I believe that this project will bring significant value to a part of the town of Pleasant Valley that doesn't currently have mixed-use development. It represents a coexisting balance approach to commercial and residential neighborhoods with a walkable town center, park, and open space. This project, I believe, is a win-win for everyone, and I would appreciate if you would approve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Linda Lentz. I also live on Darrow Place. Been there for 36 years with my husband, watched our children grow there. I think your job is to make sure that the residents of the town are safe. The safety of everybody, not just the people on Darrow Place, anyone that travels 44, their safety is going to be compromised. We were told this was going to be a lovely spot, where there's sidewalks, we could walk down the road to this place. I don't, are there sidewalks? I have no idea. Last I knew, there wasn't room for sidewalks, there's no turn lanes, there's no nothing. Now, all of a sudden, the road is getting larger. Does that mean our neighbors on 44 will be losing their homes? Because you have to widen the road in order to provide sidewalks, turn lanes, and all this other stuff. So I don't know if they're in jeopardy of losing their homes. But also, is there a walk, there's going to be a walk signal in order for the 380 residents or houses that have thousands of people living them to cross the street? Now, you put the walk sign up, there's no way you can coordinate the light at this wonderful place with the light down at Alpha Laval, with the light, the walk signal. The walk signal screws that all up. Unless you're going to have a walk signal down there, too. I'm just concerned about the safety of all the residents, not just of my street, the streets around me. I'm worried about the people from Milbrook, from Pleasant Valley, the people that travel into Poughkeepsie all the time. We do already turn right, go over Hornbeck Hill, go down Van Wagner Road. Van Wagner Road is a terrible road to go down, but it's a whole lot better than sitting for three minutes or four minutes waiting to try to get out of your, out of your street and waiting. You can't get to Adams Faric Farm on a Saturday now without stopping by where the restaurant that is not working anymore. If you turn out on my street, you will stop there before you anywhere near Adams Faric Farm. That's before you add 357 or however many more cars on a Saturday. So I'm just concerned about the safety. I think safety should be something that is in the front of your minds for all of this. The project is way too large for the area that we're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, may I have your name again? I'm sorry.
Linda Lentz.
Anyone else?
Kirk in Pirani. I'm a city, Poughkeepsie town, a Poughkeepsie resident for the past 48 years. What I want to talk to you about tonight is similar to what I talked to in the town of Aminia at their planning board meetings when it came to the Silo Ridge project. I'm a proud father of a 17-year-old and 21-year-old daughters. They go to school here in the area in the Hudson Valley, and locally, high school, senior in high school, senior in college. I want to keep my kids here. Projects like Silo Ridge out in Aminia, projects like this one, developing the waterfront in Poughkeepsie. This will help ensure building the quality of life, but also give our children jobs to stay here in Dutchess County, the town of Poughkeepsie, the city of Poughkeepsie. This project, any Curdrough project, is a well-thought-out project. They take everybody's concerns into consideration, and I know they're going to work very hard with you, as you are with them, to address all the concerns that have been brought up tonight. But I think the most important thing we have to remember is it's going to bring 300 permanent jobs to this area. That has a shot to keep my two children here, rather than move out of state and try to find a job in Texas, South Carolina, Tennessee. Projects like this, we can be the leaders in developing the area, smart growth, and providing opportunity for our youth to stay here and work here and raise a family here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? You'll have ample opportunity at future public hearings, as we go forward, to come back and listen to the applicant. He'll address, they'll address a lot of these concerns as we move forward, okay? And, you know, we will be keeping the public hearings, three public hearings open at this point. And so there'll be more time in, as the months go ahead. Go ahead. Yes, I see a hand.
Question. Will it, will it, no, I just.
You've got to get on the mic.
I just have a question. Will there be a time when somebody would be able to answer some of the concerns that we have, let alone just us voicing them and?
Well, like I said, when it comes to the future meetings, they're taking all this down. We're going to be working with them, and those concerns will be addressed.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, just to let you know, as part of the final environmental impact statement, every comment gets submitted, and then it will be responded to within the final environmental impact statement.
John, can I ask a quick question?
Sure. Is there any way to actually have any give and take between us and you guys on this project?
Unfortunately, not in this forum, because we, frankly, wouldn't be here all night. It's about committee management.
I understand. I'm just saying, probably.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you and I have spoken before. I mean, I'm.
No, no, behind the scenes, I know, but it'd be great for Richard to be able to answer questions as people are asking.
Well, you're free to reach out to.
Oh, that's true. You're absolutely free to reach out. You're right. Thank you. Absolutely. I can't speak for them, but I'm sure they'd be happy to meet with you.
Yeah, sure.
At least, I hope so. All right. So, okay. Thank you. All right, seeing anyone else?
Guess what's the pleasure of the board? The, I guess the recommendation of staff and consultants would be to, if the, you know, having heard the comments, if the board wishes to hold the public hearing open on the DEIS, obviously, we talked earlier about keeping the other three public hearings open, or you can close the DEIS public hearing as well. And that would swing us into preparing the final DEIS and preparing, you know, responses to what we've heard tonight. So I don't know if you want to poll your members, but.
Anybody have any? I mean, I personally think it's, we've got a lot, the site plan and other hearings. When I made the motion for opening the hearings, that, applying both the DEIS hearing, the application for site plan, as well as the special use and subdivision approvals, so that, those hearings will be open going forward. We've heard a lot of comments on the DEIS tonight. I'm not sure we could close that hearing, because there's opportunities to hear comments on everything else going forward. What does, anybody else think otherwise?
Well, let me go around the board and see what, because we're going to ask questions, too. So, I mean, I think we can close the draft environmental impact statement public hearing and leave the other three public hearings open. Okay, I think that would be the right thing to do moving forward, obviously. I would leave the other public hearings open to a date specific being November, November 16?
Sounds right. Right, so November 16 or December 14?
Yeah, we, well.
It's going to take time to do the DEIS.
Yeah, at this point, so in terms of keeping, adjourning the other three site plans, special permit, and subdivision, we would recommend, actually, to push those out to the December 14 meeting. The deadline for the November meeting is actually Monday. We're not expecting another submission. So it would be prudent to push that out.
To December 14.
December 14.
That gives you time to respond to the comments and so on and so forth. And with the deadline being Monday, that just wouldn't work.
And, Mr. Chairman, this is an aside reminder. The December meeting is pushed up a week, so instead of the third Thursday, it's the second Thursday because of the holidays.
Residents obviously keep abreast of these things by looking at the website. It'll tell you, you know, the dates of the meetings and so on. But, and the calendar for next year is out there. If there's any deviation from the third Thursday, you know, it would be on the calendar, so. And also, just as a reminder, we're going to be starting our meetings in January at 5 o'clock instead of 6 o'clock. Okay, so that's going to be a change starting next year. Okay. All right. So I think we should, any objection to closing the first public hearing and keeping the other three open? No? Okay.
I move that we close the draft environmental impact statement DEIS public hearing. Second.
And moved and seconded that we close the draft environmental impact statement public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. And also, there's in the back, we're going to go with the.
Do that now or?
Yeah, do that now.
I move that we determine the written public comments in the matter of McDonald Heights Town Center project shall be accepted until 4:00 PM on November 1, 2017.
And, yep.
And determine that the final environmental impact statement FEIS shall be prepared to address comments of the planning board and of the public given at the public hearing, as well as the comments, the written comments received within the time period specified by the planning board, in the matter of McDonald Heights Town Center project. Second.
And moved and seconded, call the question on, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board adjourn the other public hearings on the application for site plan, special use permit, and subdivision approvals to December 14, 2017. Second.
As we moved and seconded, that we adjourn the public hearings on the application for site plan, special use permit, and subdivision approvals to December 14, 2017.
Second.
Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board adjourn the other public hearings on the application for site plan, special use permit, and subdivision approvals to December 14, 2017. Called the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, thank you. I'd like to go around the board for any comments at this time. Anything, start with Peter? Nothing at this time. Ben?
No comment at this time.
Carl?
I just want to, you know, reiterate, I think we talked about it last time, too, but I think traffic is one of the biggest concerns of the, of the residents and the comment, based on the comments tonight. So continue to look at that. I mean, I just want to know, you know, one, somebody did have a concern about how many cars, if it was accurate, but the traffic studies, not that everybody in the community drives at the exact same minute, so that's why, you know, the numbers may not be as high as the total number of residents. But the traffic engineer could comment further on that. I think that somebody brought up safety is definitely a concern. I don't know how the signal timings work out when pedestrians hit the button, and does that, you know, notify the signal down the road as well, so that everything keeps moving smoothly. The project did include left turn lanes in and out of the project area that would help keep the traffic flowing toward Pleasant Valley and back a little bit more, but it is a lot of extra cars. And the other issue I heard quite a bit was, you know, from the people on Darrow Place, you know, there's three-story buildings fairly close. I don't know what kind of additional buffering or something you could, you could work out there.
That certainly will come up as part of the site plan review.
Construction noise is something that's going to happen to, I don't know if there's a good way to mitigate that. Certainly, the hours of construction, you don't want to be starting too early in the morning for the residents, right, you know, right up against them there.
And again, I think it'd be interesting or useful to know the scheduled events as a build, if this is approved, as a buildout occurs, you know, is it going to be everything on both sides of the road all at once? Is there going to be any kind of phasing? That would be helpful for everyone to know what the, what the process is going to be moving forward, should that, you know, we get to that stage.
I mean, it is five years overall, but, you know, it's in different sections of the area, so hopefully, you'll be, you have to, maybe, maybe you can quantify how, how long the phase would be to build those townhouses right next to Darrow Place. I guess that's about all I have right now.
Okay, Rocko, anything?
No additional comments.
Okay, Brian?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Nicole?
I grew up on 44, so this, this project, I, I love it because it's going to bring a lot of jobs, but I also dislike it because I know that it's going to bring a lot of traffic. And I think that we really need to dive into that and make sure that that's not a problem. I also realize many times the word qual, the sentence "quality of life" came up, and I think we need to keep that in mind, too, because these are our neighbors, these are people that we work with, these are relatives. So we need to make sure that when, when we're doing this project, that, you know, we can do something about dust. I'm not sure exactly how we can deal with that when, when you are constructing the buildings. I also think that it's possible that maybe two-story would be better than three-story. But again, I think those are all things that need to be talked about and worked through. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Since we're making comments, I'd just want, I'd like to go on.
I also think that it's possible that maybe two-story would be better than three-story. But again, I think those are all things that need to be talked about and worked through. So, but that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Since we're making comments, I'd like to make one quick comment. One is, there was a concern about the outflow pipe. I'm a past chairman of the Tri-Municipal Sewer Commission. I mean, I know something about treatment and the level of quality. And I can tell you that the standards that are set by the DEC are very strict. I mean, it looks pretty scary, I think, the 80,000 gallons going into the creek, but I'm sure if the applicant decides to go that way, they will come under very close scrutiny. And certainly, it's something that we'll be looking at very carefully. And I also wanted the applicant to take a look. I think we mentioned $15,000. The current building is rated, right now, for treatment 15,000 per day.
I'm sorry?
Gallon?
Current facility?
Yeah.
It's permitted for 20,000 gallons a day?
20,000.
It's only flowing about 25.
Okay, so the 20,000 is based on 100% occupancy of an industrial building, which means that there are very few occupants. If the nature of that building should ever change in the future, that 20,000 gallons may... That limit may be affected, and maybe it's something you take a look at, that in the event, the nature of the use of the building, which is a very big building, should change in the future so that the density increases, and therefore, the need for greater outflow. I'm just saying, keep it in mind, since we're looking, maybe it's something you take...
So, if I hear what you're saying, is we've got to account for the possibility that that building gets used more and more, so there's more output from there in addition...
Or if the nature, the use of the building should change.
Exactly. Yeah.
I'm just saying.
Good point. Thanks. See, past experience comes in handy. Okay. All right, so that's it on that project for this evening. Thank you all for coming out. Stay tuned to the website for the future meetings. The next one will be December 14th. And by the way, on the website, all this documented, there were a lot of letters came in from various people, pro and con. You can read those that they are on the website. You can read those.
And we'll continue to post that and other information on the website.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you very much.
We'll take a couple-minute break while the people who leave and the next applicant over Rocker Warehouse Project gets prepared to make their presentation.
Okay, application number two, Over Rocker Warehouse Project Site Plan and Special Use Permit Hearing of a Proposal to Upgrade an Existing Incomplete Building, that's an understatement, for Warehouse Use. Construct three loading docks and access to them and modify an existing access road for two-way traffic. Seventy C Over Rocker Road Zoned IH Heavy Industrial District, 5.14 acres, to Type Two Action Over Rocker Road Realty LLC owners.
Hi.
Good evening. My name is John Andrews. I'm with the firm of Rhodey, Swaykan Andrews. I'm here on behalf of the project. I will offer my apologies in advance. My partner, Bill Rhodey, has been handling this. Mr. Rhodey is slightly under the weather and was unable to make it this evening, so he's handed it to me. I will also offer a clarification. It is not Maris College, so don't confuse my face with that topic, please. The purpose of our visit, we are here to obtain the necessary approvals, to rehab what might otherwise be described as a piece of modern art that exists up the street on the properties that are normally associated with Abilities First. The warehouse has been in a state of partial completion for a number of years. Our proposal is to complete the construction, rehab the interior, make some modifications to the site to render the loading docks usable. We will be modifying the entry, as you may all be aware, the entry into and out of Abilities First is kind of a one-way circle. In this case, we will be modifying the westernmost entrance, making it a two-way, altering the traffic pattern somewhat, and allowing us access to the warehouse. We're not planning any major overhauls. What we really would like to do is complete what's out there, complete the facade, not making any significant modifications. All the modifications will be interior and cleaning up the place, and other than that, we think it's a pretty simple and straightforward application.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. Eric?
You have a recommendation of staff in your packets. There is a scheduled public hearing for this evening, so staff are recommending that the planning board hold a public hearing, and we are recommending, this is a secret type-two action, so no environmental review is necessary, and staff is recommending a conditional site plan approval. Probably the only issue would be that, the first condition is requesting that the applicant in the improvements proposed to the existing access drive off Over Rocker Road, I was approached last month by an adjacent neighbor, who has a driveway that appears to have rights, easement rights, off of that driveway for his home. He simply asked that, he asked that his driveway be maintained for the purposes of access and parking as he has used it. He provided a copy of the deed and survey, yeah, at seventy-two.
The driveway at issue is here, I believe, and I, please forgive me if I mispronounced her name, is Pelestro. And there is a driveway. If you note in our plan, the proposal is to make this a two-way section. The two-way section is to be twenty-two foot wide with a four-foot shoulder. And that's kind of a generic detail. In this particular region, the road is already greater than twenty-two foot. So, and we've been asked to make some, improve some clearances around your meter vault, so we're going to kind of be shifting this a little bit. But in the generic design, we would, of course, take into account that that's an existing driveway. That'll be worked into our design. We'd be happy to note it on the drawings. I don't foresee any major modification in that vicinity, and, you know, I apologize for the generic nature, but that's a rather long road, and we're trying to catch everything, and this kind of falls in between two sections, but I don't see anything. If anything, we'll probably actually feather it into our road and give them a little nicer intersection.
I was going to say, you could create an apron so he can get onto his driveway.
Yeah, we'll probably make that modification, and I don't see a shortening it, because I don't see the need for a four-foot shoulder there. It's an unpaid grated shoulder. This would be just typically a driveway.
It's a driveway.
So, we have no problem, and we'd be happy to put that in the form of a note on the drawings.
Good, that would be great. Thank you. The only other point in the staff review was that we found that the applicant's presentation requesting a reduced parking less than required was reasonable as presented, and so we've outlined some conditions in order to codify that on the plans.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this a public hearing?
I move we open the public hearing.
Second. Moved in second. Well, question of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. One person signed up, Joseph Pelestro. I think we were just talking about your driveway, maybe?
Pretty much.
I appreciate it. I'm at seventy-two Over Rocker Road. My only concern was that driveway. It was built in forty-seven, long before me. I've been there for about seventeen and a half years. It's a twenty-three-foot driveway, and I have a twenty-one-foot vehicle, so, I mean, I don't have a lot of fudge room. Short of moving my entire garage and foundation, my only concern, I'm all for the project. I hope you do something with the warehouse. It'd be really nice to see something done there. You know, of course, I have kids, so I'm looking sort of at truck traffic. I'd like to know how many trucks are coming in and out of there, but I can touch base with the applicant. Other than that, you know, the engine brake noise, I can get by. But as long as that driveway's not going to be affected in its size in any way, you know, you guys have my blessing.
That's what, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We like happy campers, thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this project? Mr. Cantor?
I'm just filling his gentleman's glasses.
Oh, okay. I thought you wanted to speak. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, and we close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, let me go around the board and see if anybody has any further questions. We'll start with Ben tonight.
The only questions I have are on the markings and the signage at the road, and will there be anything along the driveway, but there's no confusion of people coming out from Abilities.
This drawing here, we did put together a signage plan. We tried to keep it as simple as possible. What we've done is, this is the primary access for Abilities First now, so this will be signed with a stop. There will be no entry signs. This will be two-way out to Over Rocker with a stop sign. I don't think that we're proposing anything differently. The actual directional signages and the signs that show you how to access the site will be maintained at the second driveway. So there's currently a sign at the second driveway that says Abilities First, enter here. The warehouse will be added, and it's a detail on the plans to the bottom of that. This will, there's no signage there to indicate, other than the warehouse trucks will know to come in this entrance. And I think that that was actually worked out with staff, and this was the desire of the town. We need to change it. We'd be more than happy to accommodate you.
Okay, thank you. Carl?
Neighbor's driveway is one concern. I think I wanted to, somebody mentioned the drainage on the rail trail could be a possible issue. I'm not sure if the town is there, can mention anything about the...
Yeah, we just made a comment in, you know, our comment letter, that they did have a small stormwater management report. There is a small existing flow area on the site with a discharge pipe that goes down to the rail trail. They performed a drainage study because there's going to be new impervious area added for, you know, the loading dock area. So one of our recommendations was just to have the Dutch County Public Works Department, being that they're the ones that oversee the rail trail, just that they take a look at the report and make sure they're happy with it.
Okay.
That was our comment.
I'll just note that Brad Barclay of Public Works and I have been playing telephone tag, but he did provide a letter with his signature on it a couple of weeks ago responding from the county that it was a matter of local concern, and he hasn't, in his messages, he hasn't identified any issues.
Well, that was probably for, you know, his lead agency status, though, wasn't it?
That's county planning comments. I mean, did we hear from DPW?
It had Brad's name on it.
Okay, well, okay, we'll follow.
If you, I think I looked through the notes. I think we were under the impression the town might be forwarding the report to DPW if you did not.
I think we did, yeah.
And if you need, if you need us to follow up, please let me know, but I think it'd be more convenient if you folks did.
Yeah, I mean, I use the rail trail all the time. I just want to, and some people, in winter, so you don't want something more out, more water coming in and icing something up or something.
I think this was, just to recall, this was the matter of site plan approval years ago. Didn't get fully implemented, but I think a lot of the infrastructure was already constructed, so I think what Mr. Rhodey did in doing his analysis demonstrated that that existing infrastructure still works, and that what we would be accommodating with the additional pond would be the increase that might be occasioned by our project, so that the overall impact on the rail trail would be no different tomorrow than it is today.
Sounds good.
I think it's all hit.
Okay, this is for Neil or Eric, or is there a road name? I mean, there was a question on Tuesday morning. Do we have a road name?
It's a private road. I'm not sure.
Oh, it is? Okay, I thought we knew.
I mean, it's used today.
Right.
I didn't look into that very, you know, any farther.
Okay, I was only curious.
Nine-one-one response to it, they have a...
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just...
There's some designation there, if it's already...
The addresses of the parcels are seventy, there is, this is seventy C, and other parcels interior to the site have street addresses of seventy A and B. That may be nine-one-one's way of distinguishing them.
Ah, okay. I got you. Well, good, thank you.
I'm good. I'm all set, John.
Okay. Nicole?
I just wanted to reiterate that side road right there, you guys are putting a do-not-enter sign, right? The gravel road?
That's, go ahead.
Right?
To the left of the building?
To the, over here. Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Yeah, oops.
Yeah, that area.
Right? Do not enter.
I don't think there was any signs there. I think it's a walkway now. I think it was going to be continued as a walkway. I will check into it. I can't answer your question directly, but I'll make sure that it's not a...
People were driving on that.
Yeah.
It's no emergency access.
The only walkway I saw when I drove through there was outside the Abilities First offices and workshops. They had sidewalks and like picnic table in front of them, and those are all back on the, you can see their closest building.
If we have to sign it for emergency access only and put it...
I think we talked about grassing it over or something, so it wasn't...
We can take, we'll...
I mean, it's providing vehicle access around the building now. That's what it is. It's not a walking path, it's a vehicle path.
Right, okay.
It's overgrown, but it's there.
If that needs to be rehabbed and marked for emergency access only, we can take care of that.
The Central Hudson access?
Is it even necessary?
Well, Bill Rhodey talked, when he met with me a couple of weeks ago, he talked about the Central, maintaining the Central Hudson access as a pathway for Central Hudson for emergency access that they need because of the doorway exits, the emergency exits on the building on that side. That was what he told me.
Yeah, I don't think there's any plans to alter it, but I don't think there was any plans, but we'll make...
Yeah, just fine.
Yeah. We'll just make sure it's, nobody uses it for traffic.
Right.
Unless they're intended to. If that requires a sign, we'll put it on there.
He's told me he was going to show do-not-enter signs there.
Okay.
Or maintenance only or something like that.
Yep. Well, I'll take care of it, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Nicole? More?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, that's...
No, that's right.
Carol?
I'm good.
Peter Finelli?
First, again, I'd like to thank the applicant for choosing our town. Really love having you here. I'm glad you widened the road to twenty-two feet, which was good. I think we should have a note on the map about the SSDS maintenance, that's the subsurface depressurization system.
There's a pit there.
SSDS.
Right.
Just put a note on the plan that that will be maintained by the applicant.
We talked about that last time, I think.
Yeah. No, we hadn't. We talked at another meeting about it.
It had come up, yes.
Yeah.
There's no septic. No, it's not septic. It's, I think it was kind of monitoring it, wasn't it?
There's a DUC pump and treat system there. I think it's on the next parcel.
I think it's on the next parcel. I don't think...
Yeah, I mean, it's next, but it's not...
I don't think it's located on this part.
It is, it is located, there is, it is located on this parcel.
I'll make, I will confirm that. My understanding it was on the Abilities First parcel immediately to the, I think it's the east of us, or south of us, and, but I will make sure, and if it's, we need to maintain access to it and make sure it gets maintained, we will do, we will note that.
It's on your own report. That's where I got it.
Again, I apologize for any inconvenience. I'm not as up to speed as my partner is on this one.
Okay.
I only had a couple hours.
The parcel which has an AC, tanks on it, is that what we're talking about?
I just, we were always referring to some comments that was on your report that addressed the SSDS on this site.
Okay.
That's not ours. That...
You have to come up, Jacob, you have to put the microphone and identify yourself. That's all right.
Sure, I'm sorry. The parcel, the next parcel is not, which, which is across Abilities First, is not ours.
Okay.
We own the other two parcels. The next, we have, we have provided an easement. We have provided an easement through this parcel, but the next two parcels are ours, not this one.
Next two parcels...
The one, the one that has the environmental issues...
Not yours?
Not ours.
The next two going Easter years?
The next two going, yeah, that's right, those are ours.
All right, so you own two, there's one...
The one where the building is, and plus two more.
Then you have this one.
Now we have two more.
Okay.
And that is?
Right? Yeah.
Well, you'll check that out, just to make sure we're a hundred percent clear, because Peter said it was in your notes, and that either it was an error...
There was a discussion about it prior. We talked about it.
Okay. I'll make sure it's taken care of. My apologies.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else, Peter?
No.
Counselor? Anybody? Okay.
I move that the planning board adopt the attached resolution of findings and approval for a special use permit dated October twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, subject to the following special use permit conditions, one through two.
Okay. Second.
To move in second, that the planning board adopt the attached resolution of findings and approval for a special use permit dated October twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, subject to the following special use permit conditions, number one and two. Call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the Over Rocker Warehouse Project, subject to the following, one through six, and seven additional comments from the board tonight.
Second. Well, hang on, do we want to, just, he's going to check out that...
Right, exactly, that's what I meant, the comment, checking out the SSDS.
I actually have three, or four total, from my conversations. You wanted a note regarding the Pelestro driveway and resolved that. We were asked to verify a road name if necessary, and make sure that's correct.
And the access road.
The access road around the building, make sure that that is properly signed, so it's a no-traffic area except for emergency vehicles. And then the last is to clarify the environmental SSDS location and appropriate notes on the plan.
That's it.
Thank you.
John, I had just done some work on that site a number of years ago, and what Peter's concerned about is the Abilities First, they have a subsurface depressurization, because that's where the contamination was shown or found years ago. And then the site adjacent to that, south of that, the field, there is the pump and treat system. And then their property is also on the other side of the creek, further toward Manchester. So that concern is, it is on the adjacent parcel.
But we'll check the record, and I'll make sure, sir, to the satisfaction of staff.
Let's make sure it's not misstated.
That's correct. I will do that.
Thank you, Carol.
Thanks, Carol.
My motion includes all those, all those comments from Mr. Andrews.
Second again. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Are you prepared to do architectural?
I'm going to be blunt with you. Our proposal was relatively simple. We were simply going to complete the building that's out there, leave it essentially the same color, remove the graffiti, rehab the interior, and use it as is. What I would ask is if perhaps you have any specific issues with that, I would be glad to take them back and incorporate them, but I would also respectfully ask to kind of save us time and aggravation if you could defer that responsibility to your staff.
We don't aggravate people.
No, I might aggravate you. I've been in that position before, sir, don't want to do it again.
I think, do you plan on putting windows and doors?
Very few. The office area, which is detailed on the drawings, which I believe is at this end of the building, the rest of it's going to remain essentially the same, except for the doors required for emergency egress. It's going to be a relatively simple, stark building.
It's kind of a tan structure now.
But it's open all the way around, you can see in it. What's that going to be?
We're just going to finish that.
It's going to continue.
It's going to be sealed. It's going to be closed, same material to match existing, likely same color. We may have to repaint the structure once, to get it all to match, because I think, you know, the age of that structure, we're not going to match exactly.
Is there any way to incorporate the graffiti into the final product?
Only if we can write Yiddish also.
As long as you're not using this color.
No, no. If that would be your pleasure, we could...
That's a possibility, I don't know.
If that would be your pleasure, I'm sure... And nobody would know what it says, anyway. Most people passing by. We could do it.
We can leave that to staff. The board have any comment on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, fine.
I move that we delegate architectural review to staff.
Second. It's moved in second that we delegate architectural review to staff and take into account the comments that were made, notwithstanding the graffiti that has to go. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
How about a vote?
Oh, how about a vote? Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you very much.
As Mr. Finelli said, thank you for coming to Poughkeepsie. This is, you know, whatever you do is going to help.
We hope to great jobs, and hopefully, you know, things go well, you know, whether we have a lot of property there, hopefully we can do something right. We're going to be good neighbors, we can assure you of that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks again. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was thinking some graffiti in Yiddish wouldn't be so good. Yeah. Okay. Number three, Underhill Solar LLC, Site Plan Public Hearing Regarding a Proposed Three-Thousand-Kilowatt Solar Photovoltaic Array Ground-Mounted System, One Thirty and One Twenty-Two Underhill Road Zoned R-4A, Resident Single Family Four Acres, District Seventy-One Acres, Type One Action, Brian and Sally Underhill, owners. Hello.
Hello, I'm Ann Whaling from Cypress Creek Renewables, speaking on behalf of our application, and I also have with me Christine Zalesi from Langin Engineering, whose firm has been designing our plans.
Good. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
And I was remiss, by the way, I didn't introduce Kristen Gaynor, right there. Kristen's our new town planner, one of our new, our new town planner. We now have two.
Wonderful.
So we're welcoming, and we're glad she's here, and hopefully relieve some workload and keep things moving along, so, welcome, Kristen. Sorry I didn't mention that before.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like a brief rundown of the project?
Yes, we would.
Okay. So today, we're here talking about Underhill Solar, which is a two-megawatt utility-scale community solar facility, which we are in the process of developing on Underhill Road on landzoned by Mr. Underhill. It's approximately a ten-and-a-half-acre solar array situated on about twenty acres, if you include things like the road and the fencing and the setbacks. And currently, the site is next to an existing landfill, and the two-megawatt site, when constructed, should power approximately three to five hundred homes, which energy we would sell directly to consumers at approximately a ten percent savings over utility rates. This project would provide, in addition to the clean energy and the cost savings to the community, it would also provide revenue to the town in form of some pilot agreement tax payments, and this sort of, without a commensurate drain on services, you know, there's no schoolchildren and no people there, and no water use, and no emissions, and it's generally, solar is a clean, safe, and economical way to produce power.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Who's got this one? Eric?
Let's see. Staff only had a few comments on this. The procedurally, I'll just point out, we did, there is a public hearing advertised for this evening, so we will be recommending, we recommend the board open the public hearing on this, and then they can either close it. If you, if there's some issues that the engineer will talk about and some others, so if you adjourn it, then we'd recommend adjourned it, depending on your readiness, either for November sixteenth or for December fourteenth. Staff didn't have too many comments on the maps, there's a couple of cleanup issues. There's a couple of questions about the solar facilities within the lease area on the second parcel. Most of the comments, I'm going to, I'd like to turn it over to engineering, because there were some substantial comments there, which they and we both felt meant the project was not quite ready for a secret determination.
Okay, thank you. Andy had a few comments that are probably worth discussing. One was, there was some questions, Craig may, will probably have some input into this, but about reviewing and approving the proposed decommissioning, you know, plan. If there was some, there was some question about, does the plan include sufficient provisions to allow the decommissioning of the site in the event the applicant is no longer able to fund it? So, I don't know if that's something that the board wants to discuss, or, you know, staff will handle it, or, that was, you know, one. The other one was a drainage, you know, issue. On the southern part of the site, I believe the property is the adjacent BDH property, currently a, currently a developed commercial site. There's a drainage area on the applicant's property that does drain onto the BDH property. There's a, there's a small, small pond there on the site that receives flow from the site. There was a stormwater management report that was prepared in September that outlined a drainage area, and did show some increases, so Andy had asked them to prepare a plan that would show how that increase in flow would be mitigated. The most current submission that we have, the drainage area seemed to have changed, and now incorporates a larger area, which in our opinion kind of masks... now incorporates a larger area, which in our opinion, kind of masks, you know, the impact. So, I believe Andy, Christine, I don't know if Andy had conversations with you or someone else from your office?
Yeah, Andy had conversations with me and Mike Finan of our office, who enlightened us some new information that we recently received, we're actually going to go back and relook at the drainage areas and evaluate the need for potential other stormwater practices on site.
Yeah, because, you know, at this point, it's showing increase onto, onto adjacent property, and, you know, as we all know, we can't, we can't increase the flow off of a development site, so, so you're going to be working on that with Andy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, they also provided some additional information on habitat questions, we did recently receive a letter from the state DEC on some of the flora-fauna issues, and I know Carol's responded to that. Give them an update, Carol?
Sure, we're still, still waiting for response from DEC's letter from September 20th, they requested some revisions, and some revisions regarding the Blandings turtles, we haven't seen the, your comments back on that, and the DEC noted a reduction in the buffer of Wetland C, which I'm not sure about that, but I had a question about the length of the buffer, I think on the, the larger Wetland, Wetland A, I think it is, just to make sure that those are both considered, both accurately depicting 100-foot, which is required from the DEC.
Okay, we'll verify that, but generally speaking, we do incorporate the 100-foot buffer?
Right, one of them, I think there was a 75-foot buffer on the lower section, you know, just above where the FICA landfill is, there was one section that was 75 feet.
Yeah, it's been revised to be 100 feet, we were, I guess there was a miscommunication, we had thought it was the town buffer, so that's why we had changed it to 75 feet and not have the 100 feet, but it is back at the 100 foot, and the other Wetland C is at 100 feet.
Okay, and just because the DEC is looking for that because of the Blandings turtle habitat, potential corridors?
Yes.
There was some discrepancy on the tree clearing dates, there were three different series of dates, I'm sure you...
I did see that, and that will be corrected.
We're going to use the most stringent of those.
Yes.
And in any case, we have now passed that, so tree clearing is good. And did have a couple of questions about grading, was, it seemed insinuated that the entire site was going to be graded, but some of the areas didn't appear.
There's only minimal grading associated, so there's going to be grading associated with the permeable hall road, and some minor grading up in some of the steeper areas to reduce the slope down to the 20%, the maximum 20% that the solar panels can be installed on, so it's just very limited.
Okay, note one said that the site is to be cleared within the limits of disturbance, so just kind of like a general, you know, so we don't want the contractor to come and see that note, and then just start clearing everything, even though it doesn't need to be graded?
Yeah, so I mean, it's going to be phased, we're phasing the site in five acres increments, so the clearing will be done generally within those phases, I, I mean, if they're going to go in and cut the trees, they're going to leave this, any stumps to get within the time period, so that way it's considered stabilized.
And then everything else is just minor that you're going to respond to?
Okay, perfect, I just want to make it clear that, that after we do receive the DEC response, it's obviously our intention to comply fully with any regulations that they would put on us for the Blandings turtle preservation, and anything else, for that matter.
Thank you. I move we open the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we have, it's been seconded, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven zero, anyone, someone signed up to speak, Emily Watson?
Emily had to leave, I'm sorry, she's the neighbor across the street from the Plan B Brewery, but she'll be back next time, or provide comments in writing.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Scott Volkman.
So am I, what a coincidence. Good evening, my name is Scott Volkman, I'm a local attorney here in Duchess County with Stengel, Roberts, Davis &amp; Diamond. We currently represent, very recently representing contiguous property owners, which owns several properties known as Royal Strawberry Hill Farms. They are located at 144 Underhill Road, 147 Underhill Road, and 148 Underhill Road, and they combine to form about 75 acres of property, which are referred to in various deeds that I'm going to mention in a few moments. They also recently acquired some additional property on the backside, and contiguous to their Underhill Road property on Bedell Road, which is vacant, and also agricultural land, which they have been acquiring for agricultural uses and land preservation purposes. I don't know if we can...
Yes, it's off the map there, Scott.
It's off the map, okay. This isn't the actual survey, then, either, right? No, there is a recent survey I'm going to refer to, which is part of the submission for this month's application, but the Royal Strawberry Hill Farm does not believe that this is an appropriate use, and it's inconsistent for agricultural purposes, but I'm not here tonight to address the substantive issues with respect to the site plan or the solar farm itself, I'm here to address a different issue, which I need to bring to your attention. And I understand this board is not going to have jurisdiction to ultimately resolve this issue, but I think it's one that you need to be made aware of, and be, know that it exists. Underhill Road, it has to do with access to the property, so Underhill Road is a town road up to the property line of one of the two parcels here at 122 Underhill Road, beyond that point, it's a dirt road, it's a gravel road, and accesses my client's three properties in the back on this dead end here. If you look at the most recent survey, which was dated August 16th, 2017, it refers to access across a strip of land that my clients own, fee titled to, to take it out to Underhill Road, which talks about a right-of-way easement, and again, if I had the survey, I'd show it to you, as well as a proposed right-of-way easement. No additional easement, no proposed easement has been obtained from my clients as of this point in time, and we believe that applicant's rights over the existing easement is clearly in dispute as well. The applicant provided to you a certificate of title earlier on in the application process, in an attempt to demonstrate their entitlement to access to their properties here for this purpose, but the certificate of title raises some issues, that again, I want to bring to your attention, and I'm going to read a couple of things from some deeds, not to bore you, but just so you get a bigger picture of what our, what our concerns are here. They refer to three recorded instruments, one is a proclaimed deed dated July 7th, 1987, which does convey to the 58.9 acre parcel, which is the larger of the two parcels where most of the facility is going to be located, the right to enter upon, cross, over by foot or by vehicles, the lane or strip of land about 50 feet in width, which constitutes the southwest portion of the parcel of 75 acres described in a various deed. The 75 acres, again, is my client's property, so they, they did have a deeded right to access that portion there. It says that the strip connects the 58.9 acre parcel to Underhill Road, and the rights here granted to enter upon and cross the same by foot and by vehicle shall continue until such times as strip may become a town road. The strip has never become a town road, continues to be a private road, and owned in fee by my client Royal Strawberry Hill Farm. It goes on to say, and this is where it gets interesting, "Together with the right of the parties of the second part, members of their immediate family and guests enter upon and cross over by foot or by passenger vehicle or light truck the extension of said lane or strip of land to northeast along the northwesterly line of the 58.9 acre parcel to the wood road leading on the northwest portion of this parcel. This right shall be for the purposes for access only, and not for any development or commercial usage of said 58.9 acre parcel, and not for any agricultural usage by non-family members. This right shall terminate upon the sale of any portion of the 58.9 acre parcel or conversion to any non-agricultural usage of the 58.9 acre parcel." So, I think the applicant acknowledges that there's an issue there, they refer to the deed to obtain easements, and they refer to a title report, which refers to these documents, which have this, this language in here, which suggests that they may have authority to do what they want to do. The applicant's proposed use is non-agricultural, in our opinion, and the approval of this application will terminate the easement if it does exist at all. There's also a reference to another deed, which, again, confirms the rights of some access, there's also a reference to a road agreement, which talks about cooperating to obtain a town road here, which doesn't currently exist, and then there's an intervening deed, which does not appear in the title report, which says that this instrument is intended to convey any and all right title and interest which the parties of the first part may hold in, and to the above...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but this is going to be part of the record, you going to submit that?
I am, I'm giving...
Appears that there's a dispute.
That's right, there's a dispute.
Okay, so this needs to be resolved, right?
Right, so let me just read this one last part, then I'll conclude, and then we'll talk about where we go from here. "The instrument is intended to convey any and all right title and interest which parties of the first part may hold in, and to the above described premises, and to release the said premises of, and from any and all easements and rights of way of record which are presently encumbered with said premises, which benefit the adjoining 58.9 acre, more or less, parcel being conveyed this day." So, it does refer to and confirm some prior conveyances, but do believe that these rights that they're claiming have effectively been extinguished, and there is a serious issue with respect to access here, and I think they acknowledge that tacitly, certainly, in their application process, and I believe that they have made attempts to contact my client, which have been somewhat unsuccessful, probably, I would say, but since, since we have recently been engaged, we have also very recently opened up a dialogue with representatives of, of Underhill Solar, as well as their council, and although it's very early in the discussion process, it's a, it's a favorable conversation that we would like an opportunity to be able to pursue, so we all can decide on how to resolve this important issue, but we'd like to resolve it before this board undertakes, you know, their final approval, which you're free to do, but ultimately, that approval is, this access issue is going to be resolved before they can develop this plan, no matter how you approve it.
Okay, seems to me we would be, be coming upon us to make sure all those things are clean and green, if you will, no pun intended, before we issue any approvals.
Right, so what I was hearing was that there are a couple of environmental and engineering issues here that still need to be resolved.
Absolutely.
And what I would suggest is keeping the public hearing open...
Okay, we got you covered.
During that period to allow us to have a conversation, and see if we can't resolve this adequately, which is what our goal is at this point in time.
I understand, you're represented by council, you have council? Underhill, you have council, right?
Yes, we absolutely do.
Good, okay.
And you've been in touch with, with our parties?
Today, yes.
So you're, you're the point man?
Yes.
Okay, so now, now you have a contact, so that's good.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Good. You leave us a copy of that, so we could, thank you. Uh-huh. This is interesting, huh?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address the board.
Please, I was going to call on you.
So, I, this issue was actually brought to my attention today by Mr. Volkman, who made a phone call to me, and at that point in time, he did point out that there was possible access issue. Now, the access issue certainly is a dispute that can only be determined by a court of law, this board can't obviously make that determination, however, it can be considered as a condition of any site plan approval, of course, because the issue of vehicular access for ingress and egress is within your scope of view, but only as to adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic. So, basically, obviously inherent to that is going to be the determination as to whether or not there is adequate access, so that this application can go forward. And you can ask, you know, the applicant for, obviously, a title report, or, you know, additional evidence from, from Mr. Volkman that he's going to be providing, which, you know, can be a condition of any...
Well, I think anything that comes out of their, their negotiations, whatever transpires, is going to have to go to you for review to make sure that it's, you know, meets the guidelines and is accurate, so that this town, if we do approve this project, is without risk.
Underhill Road officially. Yeah, absolutely, once I see that, I'll be able to...
And I guess the applicant would have to decide if they want to continue with the application, with a condition, if that's the way we decide to go, or wait until you can resolve your issue with the joining landowner, and then move from there, that's, that's the urgency.
We can't resolve private land disputes.
Right, correct, I understand that, absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're comfortable with the negotiation process, and we've been attempting to engage it for some time, and I have confidence that we'll find a resolution to the problem. So...
Well, we're recommending keeping the public hearing open, so that parties can work out whatever they're going to work out, we would recommend adjourned the public hearing to the December 14th meeting.
Okay.
Give them plenty of time to at least...
At least get some dialogue.
They just started talking.
Sure. Unless you'd like to move it out even further than the December 14th?
No, I think December will be fine.
We can always adjourn it again.
Okay.
Is that okay?
All right.
I move that we adjourn the Underhill Solar LLC public hearing to December 14th, 2017.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we defer the, adjourn the public hearing until December 14th, 2017. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven zero. Okay, I think we can continue on.
Thank you very much.
We're going to, we're going to do these things just for bookkeeping, for housekeeping.
We're going to go around the board first.
We could do that, too.
And there's still, if you want, the board may discuss the application.
There may, there may be some additional comments from the board.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I know you want to get out of here, so...
No, it's fine.
Let me start with Carl.
Yeah, I guess my main concern is with the runoff that the engineer talked about, because I see that the neighbor to the south, you know, not just his pond, but he also stockpiles dirt there and everything else, and in various places, so, and that moves around, so, a runoff that coming through that way is going to wind up silting in the pond, and et cetera.
Okay, yeah.
So you've got to watch that out, so I was curious what you were, I saw something mentioned about fiber rolls to stabilize the slopes, that, that means you're really not going to, you're not going to really grade that deep slope there, you're just going to put the arrays on an angle that way, or?
We're, we're proposing some minor grading to reduce the slopes in that area, and then we're using the fiber rolls to stabilize and allow the grass to, the meadow mix to grow and take effect to prevent any erosion. We're going to look at additional stormwater measures to make sure that we're not increasing any of our discharges from the site, so that it won't affect the downstream neighbor.
Okay, yeah, because erosion coming through there, too, so you're taking all the proper measures to keep that. And another issue we've seen with other solar arrays is glare, especially at sunset, coming in or sunrise or sunset, so I don't know if, if that's been looked at, the angle of the sun coming down versus the angle of the panels, is that going to cause glare into that neighbor?
We've, I think, provided a glare study as part of our application, it can be really specifically determined, often glare is seasonal, usually at the beginning or the end of the day, and can be managed, there's a lot of surrounding vegetation, and not really a road anywhere nearby, so I think this is a minimal issue on this site, considering they're far back in the sort of center of the property. I don't, you know, the angle of the panels is such that it's sort of adjusted up, they're meant to absorb sunlight, the racking is a dark color, glare is a fairly minimal issue.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I see that you've got a seven-foot security fence proposed, is that going to be a clear fence, or what?
National Electric Code does require us to fence this property.
Right.
So it's going to be either a six-foot tall fence with three strands of barbed wire, or a seven-foot tall fence, is it a seven-foot tall fence with slats, presumably?
That's what it says in here, that's why I was curious.
Yeah, and that'll sort of help camouflage, it's a chain link, but you can, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Other comments?
Okay.
Additional comments?
No comments.
I'm sorry, I just want to reiterate what he said, with that fence, you're going to allow a space, right, for the turtles to... We've discussed wildlife-friendly fencing, and if that's the recommendation, we're, then that's absolutely what we'll do.
We've, I've been...
Talking to microphone, Carol, I'm sorry.
Consultation, talking to Mike Fishman, their environmental person. I'm pulling back on the early recommendation for the turtle fencing, predominantly because they're, they're looking to have a more frequent mowing than originally planned, was just going to be once a year, it was indicated once a year in an early season, which is probably not going to work, it was March, so...
And, and that, that's another thing that really we're open to discussing, generally, there's sort of a balance to be achieved between the wildlife habitat and the safety of crew that have to access the parcel, so, you know...
So if it is more frequent, given that we... So if it is more frequent, given that we still are maintaining the 100-foot corridors from the wetlands, given that there's still other areas, the landfill has a similar kind of habitat. It's a small area, we're a little more concerned now about the entrapment. If you have, you know, woodchucks or what have you, they can get in, they can get out easily. If you have a turtle, it may not be able to get out as easily, find another hole down the road. And then there's a chance of desiccation because it's basically an open area with just only solar arrays. So it may cause like an entrapment situation to be more harm than good. Also, if there's more frequent mowing, there's not the chance of other nesting critters being there as opposed to an eight-inch, 12-inch-high constant, constantly, or non-maintained grassland. So we've kind of retracted a bit on the requirement for the turtle fencing. Again, it's a small area and there are areas to go around.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter. I was on the site the other day in the southeast corner, where you have that cedar, little cedar forest. And there is a substantial grade there going west or north, northwest. When you regrade, are you gonna be using soil from the site or are you gonna be bringing soil to the site?
I believe we're gonna be, we're gonna be using the soil from the site. I don't know the, I don't know the cut fill off the top of my head, but I, whatever we disturb, we're gonna be using on site.
Will you be sharing that with us at some point?
Um, yeah, the cut fills should be on one of our plans, but if it's not, we'll make sure it's on there.
Have you done any test hole digging there to determine how deep you are to bedrock?
Yeah, we do geotech on this and I'm not sure if it's been completed at this point, but it will be prior to any building.
Because I'm sure you've noticed that there is a massive amount of rock.
It can vary from, yeah, throughout the site, definitely, there are areas.
So we would be interested in seeing the cut fill and the geo.
Okay.
Also concerned about a letter that we received from our engineer about a month ago about the waste, the stormwater. And it reads, "The site plans submitted for review have been revised to replace the previously proposed standard stormwater management practices with a non-standard practice that this office has not seen approved for use by NISEDEC. It is recommended that the applicant provide documentation of acceptance of the non-standard stormwater practice by the NISEDEC prior to site plan approval." Have you done that?
So I just want to clarify, the permeable haul road is not a stormwater management practice. We've been in contact with the DEC and the local regional office. The overall DEC sees it as a permeable surface instead of impermeable. It's not a gravel, it's a clean stone. The Region 3 office concurred with that determination and all that correspondence has been included in the, one of the appendices of the stormwater report.
Have you shared that with our engineer?
Yes, it should be.
It was in the current report, then.
I think there was, I know when I talked to Andy, I don't think he had the latest version of it and then that had, in the newest version, we have the additional correspondence from the Region 3 office included in the appendice.
Okay, well, you're gonna be updating your report anyways.
Yes, so that's, that's gonna be consistently in the report.
Make sure that he has all the most, the most current stuff in there.
Yeah, there was an addendum to the, between submissions, so.
Okay. You have about roughly 10, you have 20 acres of the site devoted to the solar panels. It's about, I'm guessing, giving a little wiggle room between panels, about 80% of the 20 acres would be about 300,000 square feet of solar panels that would be as your facility, give or take.
I think it's actually 10.3 acres is our preliminary solar area.
So that's 400,000 square feet.
Well, they're in rows and the only part that actually goes into the ground, the DEC for permitting purposes does consider them to be a permeable surface.
I'm not gonna split hairs, let's call it 200,000 square feet, okay?
With double rack panels of 12-foot rows tilted at about a 20 to 25% angle, there's gonna be row spacing of probably upwards of 20 feet. So you've got a row of panels that's 12 feet and then 20 feet of open spacing.
How about 100,000 square feet? Does that seem fair to you?
I don't, I don't know the calculations.
The reason I'm asking you is, at some point, you're gonna have to remove all that material, the decommissioning part of your program. Now, 100,000 square feet of solar panels is a considerable amount. To me, it seems a considerable amount. And as part of your proposal, we have a one-page document that says, you know, at the end of the 30 years, we're gonna remove all of these things with no explanation of exactly how you're gonna do it. So it would be helpful to us, I think, to know what your plan is in terms of how, how are you gonna do that and what kind of equipment are you gonna need to do that and what's it gonna look like when you're done.
Sure. If you'd like, I can give you a brief rundown of the decommissioning process and if not, I'm happy to just provide a slightly more detailed plan that addresses that.
I think that'd be good.
And finally.
A more detailed plan would be excellent.
Your proposal says, under decommissioning of site, Underhill Solar LLC guarantees that Underhill Solar LLC shall be removed at the expense of the operator and so forth. What does that Underhill Solar LLC guarantee entail?
Normally, decommissioning involves removing all the appurtenances from the ground, removing the posts that have been put in.
I understand that, but the word guarantee, how are you gonna guarantee to the town that at the end of 30 years that that's gonna be done?
Well, in the discussions that we've had previously, we've talked a lot about the salvage value of the equipment. So the equipment to build a solar farm is really valuable. I mean, there's 200,000 tons of steel in the racking and the salvage value of that is high. There's, you know, a ridiculous amount of copper wire, almost equivalent in value to the amount of racking cost. And then there's the panels themselves, which after 20 years still maintain enough value to be used in a personal application, although they don't, they don't produce enough to maintain their commercial use. They do, they do provide enough, I mean, you're still gonna get close to 80% of their capacity, I think, at the end of their useful time. So people take them and buy them. You know, you can, you can buy used commercial solar panels and there'll be a market for that, we presume. But if not, the disposal is relatively harmless because they can be just, you know, landfilled if need be. So to take them apart requires trucks and men and that's pretty much it. I mean, you'll, you'll need to pull out the conduit.
Maybe you're not understanding my question.
Let's just cut to the chase.
Yeah. Who is gonna be responsible for doing all that?
The owner of the project.
Which is?
Which is Underhill Solar.
Underhill LLC.
Yeah, absolutely.
How are you going to, you state that you're gonna guarantee that you're gonna do that. What form is that guarantee gonna take?
What form would you like it to take?
Well, I've looked at a lot of other solar farms in New York State and generally they are asking that a performance bond be provided.
Yeah, in about 50% of municipalities, people decide that the salvage value is not enough of a guarantee and some places do choose to institute a bonding process for that.
Do you have, would you have any objections to a performance bond?
Without getting into a real deep discussion, I would first be happy to provide you with the data of decommissioning cost estimate that was sort of put together by a New York State licensed professional engineer for us. And obviously, we'll consider recommendations of the board. If this is something that the board feels strongly about, it's something that we would obviously consider.
I think that's a good starting point. That'd be great because you always like to make a decision based on facts.
Real numbers.
On data. So if you can provide us with that, I think it would be a great starting point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Craig, can you jump in on this because we've had some discussions about this, this subject and the bonds, bonds is related to the town of Akipsi under current law?
Yeah, that's something that Andy Lern actually did raise in his, in his memo to the board, but I'm gonna get, since this matter's gonna be deferred, I'm gonna be, you know, I'll get back to the board on that particular issue.
Okay.
I just would like to add, though, I was handed a, a letter from Scott Volkman dated October 19th with exhibits and that was hand-delivered to me. He wants that to be made part of the record, which I will actually scan an email to all members of the board and staff.
The record, the thing, the document you read this evening?
Yeah, the document that was read this evening.
The original should come in.
Carol, Carol will take care of it.
You got the original, Carol?
No.
I have it right here, so.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess they were all originals.
Okay.
Wow. Double your pleasure, double your fun, we got several originals. There you go. Thank you. I had a thought and I forgot what it was. Peter, you done? I'm sorry.
I'm done.
I have nothing to add at this time. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to do?
I move that the planning board determine that the application is incomplete for seeker review pending further elaboration on the proposed development and its potential effects.
Second.
It's moved in second, the planning board has determined that the application is incomplete for seeker review pending further elaboration on the proposed development and its potential effects. We call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this site plan application subject to the following, 1 through 6. And do we want to add 7 about the decommissioning information?
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, the planning board defer action on the site plan application subject to the following, 1 through 7, 7 being comments from the board and the applicant and particularly the decommissioning discussion that we had. Call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven to zero. We'll see you in December.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I suspend the rules, I have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on any other agenda item, an agenda item only? Seeing no one, I move we resume the rules.
Second.
Moved in second, I call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, motion carries seven to zero. Plan review number one, Raymond Avenue School redevelopment, recommendation to Town Board on zoning amendment and site plan review regarding creation and designation of a new anchor project district.
I gave it away.
In a two-phase mixed-use development including 122, 172 apartments, 16,200 square foot commercial space, 110 hotel rooms, open area, and 351 parking spaces. The site redevelopment converted former Arthur May School to apartments and construct other multi-story use buildings. 25 Raymond Avenue and 31 Raymond Avenue is owned ATC or always in town center.
After you, I say that.
Lady? Yoohoo. Enough?
Sorry.
District 6.4 acres.
Yeah, I had enough.
6.4 acres respectively. Unlisted action, POS Management Inc., Contract Vandy, Arlington Grade School and Arlington Central School District owners. Okay, that all said. Just having fun tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jacob Rekis, I'm here once again on behalf of POS Management, Contract Vandy for the Arthur May School redevelopment project. First, I just wanted to thank you guys for having us once again. We were here a little over a month ago and submitted some plans to you guys in September. And with that, I'm gonna turn over to a smarter Stuart Messenger.
James, as we go on, I guess later. Thanks. Stuart Messenger with Chasen. Want to give you a brief overview of the site plan, talk about where I think we are in the process and then hopefully answer your questions. To reset, we're in front of the board for two things. One is an advisory recommendation to the Town Board on a zoning amendment to the ATC district. That's not ripe for tonight, we were hoping we'd be able to talk about that tonight, but, but staff and consultants are still looking at it. And so we hope that we'll be able to talk about that in November so that you can make a recommendation back to the Town Board on that. And then the second thing is, we're in front of you for site plan review. You will have noted with the plan that we submitted that there isn't a hotel in the plan. And if you recall the discussion last month, you talked about difficulties we had with access that in, when we showed you a two-phase plan where there was a second phase with the hotel, we had an access that was offset from Davis Avenue. And we met with DOT and they said, we're not gonna approve that. And so unfortunately for us, the hotel is not a part of this plan anymore. And so a lot of the comments that we received related to, you need to include the hotel in the documentation and we can't because we can't, if you look at our site plan, we don't have room to make the access work and to have a hotel. So that's not a part of our plan anymore and I think that kind of hopefully answers some of the questions that folks had. So recall, the project is 180 residential units. We're still tweaking the site plan a little bit so that number may change very slightly, but that's, that's where we are with the plan that we've submitted. There's four buildings. Building A is 16 units, three stories, about 5,600 square feet of commercial space. Building B, three stories, 20 units, about 8,700 square feet of commercial space. The Raymond Avenue School, right now we have 44 units in there. And then the apartment building in the back, Building C, 100 units. You'll note that this configuration changed a little bit over what we originally had. I'm gonna let Sean Corp talk a little bit about the reasons for that. We are compliant with parking, 253 spaces required, 253 proposed. I wanted to mention, this is a four-story over a podium, parking deck, a parking podium, it's called a podium building. That's the tallest building on the site. We have 52% impervious area and 19% building coverage, so not at all unreasonable numbers. We listened to your comments from last month, you asked us to add spaces for zip cars. We've done that back here. We had a dog park and you said, what about the people park? So we added a play area in the back. You asked us to look into a vehicle recharging station, we're still researching that. We don't show that on the plan because we're still doing some research on how that would work. You asked us to add bike racks and so there's bike racks at several locations on the property. I'm gonna ask Sean Corp from Balzer Talk to just talk a little bit about the architecture and then I'm gonna come back and talk about where we are in terms of comments and then hopefully answer your questions.
Thank you. Sean Corp, Balzer Talk Architecture. So regarding the architecture, the front buildings, we'll start up there. Buildings A and B, we tried to, once we realized we were gonna keep the school, that was our, the charge we were given, was to keep the school at all costs. So once we had that as our goal, we had to try to arrange the site, the front half of the site, around that. So we tried to create this public plaza in front of the school between Buildings A and B, figuring that would be a nice gathering place for this end of Raymond Avenue and used the pediment and the grand staircase of the school as the backdrop for this public space. These buildings in front, they're three stories tall, they're in keeping with the mass and scale of the existing school, for instance. We're envisioning these buildings to have these pedimented roofs, gable roofs on each end of the building with a flat roof in between. The flat roof is about the same height as the fascia on the existing school. The peak of the gable roof is about the same height as the peak of the pediment. And then the peak of these roofs is about five feet below the ridge of the existing school's roof. So we're trying to keep all of this in the same scale as the existing school and what Raymond Avenue could be. The back building, Stu had mentioned, the configuration of this back building had changed. Yes, thank you. Previously, the back building was a large base of a parking garage with two towers on either end, to the north and south. As we started to develop that concept, we came across. across issues, both programmatically, financially, and functionally. The size and proportion of those two square towers didn't lend themselves very well to laying out apartments. There was a lot of internal space within the middle of those towers that wasn't really usable for apartments. Came a lot of extra common area.
Like wasted space?
There's a lot of wasted space in the middle. We were also doubling up utilities and vertical circulation. We had two separate lobby spaces on the ground floor with two separate elevator cores, with two separate trash compacters and trash chutes, four stairs. It was a lot of redundancy. And then, what was also happening was the courtyard that we had on the roof deck on the second floor, between those two towers, it was 60 feet wide. And so, the apartments that faced that courtyard, they were looking 60 feet across at their neighbors. You could really see into your neighbor's apartment 60 feet away. So, there was a lack of privacy there. Also, with the tower to the south, that courtyard would be in shadow for much of the time, particularly in the winter. So, what we've done is we've kind of created this C shape, or maybe it's an I shape with the center kind of shifted to the east. This layout is a lot more efficient for laying out apartments. It's about 70 feet wide all the way around, double-loaded corridor. It limits the amount of vertical circulation that we have, trash compactors. It's one single main lobby to the building now instead of two. And we've still managed to keep that big courtyard space, the big public plaza, roof garden, for you, as you will, for the tenants. It's just on the west side of the building now. And the reason for that is that we're thinking that most tenants who are going to use that amenities space will probably do so in the evening. And having it on the west side of the building, they'll have more sunlight. If we had flipped it the other way, it would always be in shadow. So, that's kind of why we've got it on the west side. We did pull the center part of the building back from the podium below, so that we can get some green space. It'll be for individual tenants, not necessarily for the public amenities space. But there is an opportunity there to get some greenery up on that second story that is visible as you come into the property from Raymond Avenue along the boulevard. And this is the new rendering that kind of gives an example, or a flavor of what the architecture could be. Again, we're trying to incorporate some of these gables and some of the window groupings that we have proposed on Buildings A and B along Raymond Avenue. Any questions?
So, let me just talk for a minute about where we are with the process. We met yesterday with the fire chief, who I think is here. We appreciate the time. It was a good meeting. We were able to resolve a lot of his questions and kind of agree on next steps for us with him. We need to do some flow testing. We need to investigate creating some kind of emergency access, and we have some thoughts about that. That's questions you guys have asked as well. We need to look closer at getting people around the back of the large building in the event of an emergency, in this little cramped-up space right there. So, we'll be working on that. With respect to the comments from town staff and consultants, we were frankly pleased there weren't that many. There wasn't a 20-page letter, it was a four-page letter. I consider that a victory. And most of them are very technical in nature and easy to resolve. We have a workshop with staff and consultants next Wednesday, and my understanding is the intent will be to go through those comments in some detail, so that we can kind of gain a common understanding of what we need to do to resolve technical things. So, what we would like to do is make a resubmission that addresses whatever comments you folks have for us tonight, as well as the various technical comments for your December meeting. We're hopeful that you would open the public hearing for the project at your November meeting, because the form of the project isn't going to substantially change. We think that everything at this point is sort of minor in nature. If you felt the need to continue to hold the public hearing open into December, that's certainly fine with us. But we'd like to get that process started. And as I say, we hope in November that staff will have kind of finalized what they want to recommend as zoning, and that we'd be able to talk about the zoning amendment at that time. So, with that, we'll open it up to discussion.
Yeah, if I could just sort of jump in here for Liz goes through her comments. We've had a, since the original submission to the town board, which is the lead agency back in August, we've had a change to the project that still needs to go back to the town board. I've been kind of holding off giving that back to them, because what I also want to do is to give the town board the latest version of the text amendment, which we're still working on internally. We're a little behind. We've got a lot of other stuff going on as well. My intention is to hopefully wrap that up with you guys as well, and amongst ourselves next week. And then, that would be a referral back to the, basically giving it to the lead agency, the town board. We'll have to decide whether we can do that in time for their November 1st meeting, or whether it'll be the November 15th meeting. Our practice has been where there's a change to the project, and the original project included the hotel. I think we had 172 units. Now, we're up around the 180, whatever. So, there's been a change to the project, been a change to the access. The hotel's no longer part of it. We need to basically go back and explain what's going on to the lead agency, the town board, introduce them to the latest version of the text amendment, and we can do all of that in November. And it has always been the town's practice, when we have a change to the project like this, it's, I think it rises to the level of substantive. We send copies of the new versions out to all the involved and interested agencies, so we will do that as part of the, you know, we go back to the town board. So, we still need to kind of take care of that in November. But I think we can make a lot of progress next week. The meeting that Stu was referring to is a departmental level meeting. I've talked to Torgolanti as well. Either he or George Finn will be at that meeting on Wednesday. But we will have our water sewer departments, everybody in attendance, all eyes on the drawing, and hopefully we can make a lot of progress in terms of providing direction on the next series of changes for the December meeting.
If, and so, it sounds like if we need to first go to the town board, and for them to then recirculate the zoning text amendment, which is the other thing we'd like you folks to do.
Right.
We would probably need to give them an updated EAF.
Well, that's, you're going to hear the comments from Liz. Yeah, the EAF that we have still talks about the hotel, the plan. So, we need to, you know, kind of wrap all of that up. That's all part of Liz's review, and I'm sure you've seen that.
So, I don't think we want to have a, next month, I don't think we want to have a public hearing. There's a lot to do.
I can only ask.
Yeah, I mean, the key here is to get the site plan workup done to a point where the planning board is comfortable. We could talk about the public hearing going forward. Of course, the public hearing wouldn't be closed until the town board has acted on the underlying zoning amendment, and then, the planning board is then authorized to actually vote on that, once it's been filed with the Department of State. So, that's a couple of months out, at least. So, we'll have to talk about the timing, how that's going to work.
Okay. That's fine. I think the key thing, then, for us to move the process forward, is to make sure that we're happy with, that we make you happy with the EAF, and that shouldn't be too hard to do.
Right. And the updated EAF that kind of reconciles with the current site plan, it's also needs to be given back to the lead agency as well.
Right. No, that's exactly what I'm saying. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Liz?
So, actually, my plan review is a little bit conceptual. So, I still will be doing detailed review, but there was no reason to do it at this point with a project in flux, et cetera, and we still need the zoning to be a little more solidified. So, I did focus on the EAF, and it sounds like that's pretty clear. You know, give us a clear read on what exactly the project is, no hotel, et cetera. How many units? Update some of the population estimates, and then go back through some of those sections. And then, I just had a few. One of the conceptual comments that I had, I saw repeated in some other agency comments. It had to be, had to do with expanding the pedestrian pathways. So, it really connects with all parts of the site and off-site. And then, I was looking a little bit at how close things get to hate, and I don't know if there's a way to screen in that space, but I think there could be. Maybe a planted retaining wall. Same is true on the southern end, where you meet up with College View Towers and College View Apartments. You know, it's skinny, the parking comes close to it, but maybe there's a way to just put some kind of a visual interruption there. Let's see. And then, a number of the other agencies talked about secondary access, whether emergency or otherwise, to Fulton. So, that's something to think about and work on. And, you know, just as you go through the EAF, try to really quantify things consistently. And I don't know if, well, we're going to have this technical meeting, but maybe there can be some back and forth after that, in terms of pulling the EAF back together. That's it. The bedroom count will come out. I imagine, are we going to see Building C's garage layout in terms of parking, looking at that?
Yeah. Yes, we can do that.
Okay. I think those are my main issues.
Thank you. I learned a new technical term tonight.
What?
Visual interruption.
Got to keep things interesting.
Is that like a really, really, really tall tree?
It's like a skinny, skinny little buffer slash screening thing, because there's no room.
A new buzzword.
It's actually kind of an old one.
Okay.
Visual interruption.
Can I ask Liz one question, just because I got you here?
Do we need to explain visual interruption to you?
Google it.
In your comments, you, in a couple places, asked us to provide the delta in development potential between the underlying zoning and the proposed zoning, which I understand totally. Are you, you're speaking of just our property, or other properties in the district? I don't think there are other.
I think just your property. I don't think there's a reason to go further than that.
I don't think there's other properties in the district that meet the criteria.
Yeah, and I don't think that's necessary, because even if you just made a comparison, it's just for the purpose of the town board being able to evaluate. They can evaluate it based on this property alone, I think.
I thought it was a reasonable question. I just wanted to clarify.
And I also put in a reasonable, you know, on saying, "What could we do if it was just ATC zoned?"
Right.
A reasonable scenario, and I think.
I understand. Okay.
Thank you. Peter?
You know, Andy had, Andy had, you know, comments. I think the plans are, you know, preliminary, like at this point. So, you know, many of the things, just ask for additional, you know, details on grading, you know, and drainage. I think from our, you know, perspective, probably the biggest item in our court is going to be just looking at the drainage. You know, JMC is looking at, you know, the traffic. That's obviously going to be an issue, but that's not going to be in our court. So, we have a lot of house, you know, housekeeping items, but it's just standard things that'll be in the site plan, you know, for engineering. So, we'll work together with the applicants.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Let me start around, let me start with Rocco. Anything?
Nothing at this time.
Brian?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Peter's recused himself from this. Ben?
I'll wait. Nothing at this time.
Carl?
I always have something.
That's good.
I want to thank you, at least, for addressing some of the comments from the last time we did it and added, you know, did some more amenities and such. So, that's great progress on the plan. And I just want to confirm, so right now, the hotel, there was, yeah, because of the way you extended the retail, there's no way to do a second phase of the way you had planned for the hotels. So, yeah, so that's why, that's why it's not in the traffic impact statement at this point.
Okay.
The county had a, oh, I did have, did have a question about outdoor dining. Consider that maybe something for that plaza between the two front buildings. If there's restaurants on those bottom floors, some tables out there would be great. Fits in with that whole region
Yeah, we'd love to see that.
County suggested looking away for alternative access through, over Fulton Avenue. I don't know if you explored that at all, but you'd have to work with other parcel owners. You don't have any direct access.
Right. We don't. What we, and a number of people raised that comment. I mean, I think what we can do is make a stub to a property line. And when the next, and do it in a location where in an emergency, a vehicle could get through, right?
That would be good.
Obviously, we can't improve the other property, but there's locations we can show that.
Okay. So, at least it's under consideration. Traffic flow, the last comment I have, just looking at the site plan, you know, you kind of come in there, there's a lot of stop bars for that little section of parking in between the buildings, whereas, I don't have a laser on me, but that, you know, I wondered if you might consider a, this section here. It looks like, you know, somebody coming in has to do a lot of stopping and stopping, going. Is there a way to maybe just make that like a one-way circulation? Perhaps maybe a mini roundabout to mirror other things in Raymond Avenue to, maybe I would. Because you need access, I guess you need back access to these buildings and such, so.
No, we appreciate that comment. Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you.
I, hmm, kind of disappointed there's no hotel at this point.
So are we.
You know, you could make it like a real skinny, tall hotel.
A twenty-story hotel. We talked about today.
Hotel.
I keep pushing them and saying, "Why can't you figure this out?"
You climb in.
Like nine-story little, you know, one, no car.
Tokyo tall.
You're just going to have to acquire some more property, that's all I can.
Yeah, it was sad to see the hotel go. It seemed like it would be a good fit there.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Container units.
Anybody? Greg, anybody else? All right. All right.
Well.
I think we'll defer.
I move that the planning board defer action on an AP rezoning recommendation and on the site plan application, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board, those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to the following, one through 14, and 15 additional comments tonight.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. The planning board defer action on an AP zoning recommendation and on the site plan application, and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board, and those received from town departments and agencies, including but not limited to one through 14, and 15 being comments from this evening. Call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Manchester Road, 28 Manchester Road, truck rental site plan amendment, site plan review to construct a parking area for up to four, four trucks behind an existing fuel station and convenience store in order to operate as a truck rental location. Huh?
That's all right.
Five trucks.
Five trucks.
I figured it must have been four.
How about if he settled for four and a half?
Five trucks.
Yes, I did. I've seen this.
In order to operate as a truck rental location, 28 Manchester Road's owned Arlington Town Center ATC, .68 acres, unlisted acted, Joytie Incorporated owner, or something like that. Yotai. How do you say it?
Joy, Joyty.
Joyty.
I believe.
Okay. We'll go with that one.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello. You are?
Steven Burns, Burns Engineering Service. I represent the applicant, Joyty Incorporated at 28 Manchester. Since the last time we saw you, I revised the site plan to streamline the area that the trucks will be parked behind the building. I actually reduced the overall impervious area added to the site. I added a couple, a couple trees to screen where the trucks will be parked from the nearby residential district located, I'm going to butcher this, Tallerty Place. That's, there's actually, it's a, it's a dead-end street to the south of the project that. that, that dead-ends into the parking lot of, I believe, what is twenty Manchester Road, which is further down the application. I've also tried to bring it into more conformance with what the, the original approved site plan was. I've added back some landscaped areas. I've laid out the parking. Originally, there was fourteen parking spaces. The ATC zone calls for eight. There's eight parking spots shown with an additional handicap parking spot. I pulled those parking spots back away from the building a little bit and put some, put a small landscaped area there and also showing some landscaping up front between the entrances. There, there's some existing landscaping there that's, kinda just some scraggly U's that I propose that they kinda just get rid of and, and replace with some fresh landscaping. And there's the, the three, the two spots on the right are proposed more for customers to drop off the vehicles where the, where the, where the rear two spots are there more for when there's an overflow and when they, when they need to put the trucks, an employee can back the truck down and put them in the back so that we can avoid some conflict of people driving big trucks far distances in reverse. There's really no other way to get to the back of the building to store these things back there besides going through the side. The aisle width is, is currently greater than, than necessary. I believe that I kept at least twenty-six feet for the aisle width throughout.
Okay, thank you.
Kristen's got this.
Kristen's got it. Kristen, sorry. All right, Kristen.
Hi there, thanks for coming in. Nothing like, quite like jumping into my first planning board and then tearing apart your site plan, so have mercy on me. So the planning staff here reviewed the previous submission. We do have some notable comments, but we would move that the, if the planning board so agrees, we would recommend that the planning board consider the adoption of a secret NAGDEC resolution as included in your packet and also to adopt a resolution to grant conditional site plan approval based on comments provided by planning staff and other departmental staff and any comments so forth tonight.
Okay, thank you. Let me go around the board and start with Brian. No, need to change it. Peter, actually, Peter's there.
Really, the only comment from engineering is just, Steve, you're adding some pavement in the back and you, you say in the site plan that you're gonna slope that towards Manchester Road. It doesn't really look like the contours allow you, you know, to do that without, you know, taking up a lot of current, like pavement. So, you know, our comment basically says you're gonna have to, you know, look at that and come up with something so that you don't increase. You know, again, it's gonna, you know, be minimal, but it, currently, it looks like it does flow onto the adjacent property, so.
Actually, I, I did drive by there earlier and looked and all the drainage from the site flows onto, into catch basins that are on the adjoining parcel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's the current configuration of it. Now, I thought that it was up and ma, up into that catch basin in Manchester Road, but there's actually a catch basin at the rear of the parking lot of twenty Manchester.
I mean, maybe you can come up with some, I mean, it's not really a lot of pavement, so maybe you can come up with some kind of an infiltration trench practice or something, just, you know, to mitigate it's, it's, you know, it's not-
Yeah, you know, Peter's right. You're gonna need to do something on the site. In fact, the next, next presentation is about the, the plans for the property next door, and it's their catch basin that they're currently draining into, so. There's really no way for us to not drain to the, to those catch basins. It's an existing condition. It would essentially mean that we would have to bring the water uphill to get to somewhere else, I think. The, it's, I, I guess, you know, it's been that way for years, is what I'm, what I'm going at.
But you're paving it now, you know, you're paving, I mean, again, it's not a huge amount, but you are paving some of it, so it is technically gonna increase, you know, a little water going onto their property, and we can, really can't, you know, do that.
I can, I can put it-
You can come up with something, I think, some kind of an infiltration practice that'll-
Can you work with?
Probably, yeah.
Yes. Well, we gotta- There, there's another answer there.
Yeah, yeah. It's-
A, a little infiltration trench, it's no big deal, I don't think.
Yeah, we're smart enough to figure it out, we're, we're good.
If I may, just piggybacking on the comment about a potential neighbor. Landscaping was a significant issue that should be addressed as well. I know that there was an inclusion of several trees in the back portion of the property on your site plan. However, we do think that it would be necessary to have departmental staff out there at the time of clearing to identify which trees should be removed, which, which should remain, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to remove existing trees, if they already exist, to replant new ones. Again, coming into this kind of late, but that's, that's our thoughts at this time.
So what you're saying is that you, before they plant those trees, you'd like to come out and evaluate the existing, the existing trees along that property line?
Yes.
Okay. Do I address that with a note, or?
I think that would, yeah, that would, that would be best for the record.
Yeah, I would say just really the, the landscaping is key, just because of, you know, what Neil said, with the adjacent property coming on board as well, so. That'd be great, but other than that.
There's not a lot of, not a land, lot of land there to do landscaping on, but took the whole thing down and just grassed it over, that would, never mind.
Best you can, thanks.
Nicole?
I just wanted to mention the fencing on that property, if that could be fixed.
Most of the fencing. Most of it's on the adjacent parcel, right?
Yes. The, yeah, the-
That'll get done when we do the site plan.
The fencing actually belongs to the adjacent property here.
It does belong to the church, okay.
It kind, one, one piece actually meanders across the property line, but most of it's not on the property.
Okay.
A meandering fence.
It happens.
A vertical, okay.
Yeah, that's it, thank you.
On the rear of the property, you have four proposed Norway spruce.
Yes.
Which appear to be very close to the property line. And Norway spruce become massive, you know, as they mature. I'm just wondering, did you look at in, any other varieties than the Norway spruce when you were, like an arbevidia or something, which grows tall and, and thick, but they won't have like a twenty-foot wings, you know, wing spread.
I, I kinda felt that the area that I was, that I left for them is, is probably about-
You've got twelve feet on center.
Okay, and then they were probably in an area that's probably fourteen feet wide from the pavement to the parking area. I was, I, I was thinking that they would fit there nicely for a-
So where the plant, where the plant is, you have fourteen feet to the property line?
Uh, from the pavement, roughly.
Looks much closer, closer than that. Fits, it's fine. Although I don't, I don't like arbevidia, because they don't last, and deer love them. But if it fits, fine, but let's, we worked out with-
The, the Norway spruce are, are more deer resistant.
Oh, for sure.
And that's why I kinda lean towards them a lot, and they, they tend to actually, I think that they, they're more attractive of a tree than-
They are, but they're big. The only reason I asked you is because they're so close to the property line.
But a boxwood.
And they get huge.
Yeah, I, I figured that if, I didn't actually think of encroaching on the other parcel, but, there is a, uh, they're pretty far away from the building, and I don't think that people, if they park out in that area of the parking lot, it's gonna be rare.
Good, thank you, thanks.
Ben?
I see a handicap parking spot here, but there's no van accessibility with that handicap spot, right?
It's on the left-hand side of it. The striped area is actually, would work for, it's labeled as snow storage, yes, but, uh- I can, I can change the hatching to the, the snow storage is a smaller portion of that area.
And is there a limit to the size of the trucks that they're gonna rent? But this is really a lot of space.
U-Haul trucks do not get that large, because there's a threshold where you need a CDL to drive them. So you, the maximum U-Haul truck, I, I can't, I don't know what the, the actual size is, but this, this, uh, these parking spots were sized to sufficiently fit what the maximum U-Haul truck size is.
I think he's using like ten-foot or fifteen-foot over there. They're really small, they're, they're, they're like vans, so they're not very big at all.
You, with U-Haul, you could get anything up to-
Like twenty-
No, but I'm saying what he has over there, like on his lot right now, he has like the small vans, I think they're like ten or fifteen-foot or something.
Yeah, the, but the thing is, is that other, they could rent things at other places and drop them off there. So they could drop a full-size box truck off there. Those box trucks really aren't that long, though. I think that they're thirty se, or, maybe they're twenty-seven feet long. I think that I provided thirty-five feet, though. So they might've been something like, more like thirty-two.
We're Googling U-Haul, see what their biggest truck is.
I, I did that, it was a while ago, though, I can't remember, I can't remember off the top of my head. Says twenty-six footer doesn't require a CPO. So that, there we go, that would be twenty-six feet plus the cab of the truck would fit, fit us into a thirty-five foot part, a thirty-five foot long parking spot with a little bit of room to spare.
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay.
As long as it doesn't snow. There's plenty of area in the back to push the snow, though.
Okay, let's, Carl?
Yeah, I had, my comments were about the fence as well and some of the landscaping, so it's great that you guys brought it all up. Uh, one, you know, the pavement condition has got some issues that, I don't know if, you said you're, you're adding the pavement back. I don't know if you're gonna do any other repair.
I'm, I'm sure that he'll touch it up as appropriate to, to make everything-
Get work together.
Yes.
Hitting some big bumps or something. And you know, the other thing I might mention is that, you know, for landscaping, you're, you were trying to decide on what to do, but since the other project is coming in at the same, similar timeframe, maybe you wanna do some coordination to say, okay, if you're gonna plant this here, they may be planting something on their property line and you're on your property line to get, make sure they're not diametrically opposed to, to what's being planted.
Okay.
Just to touch base, perhaps.
Yeah, I know, I spoke to Mike today. Okay, nothing new at this time? We started with you?
We started with me, you go on this side, I think that'll work that way.
Peter? Ben?
Done?
Done? All right, we're done. I, my only comment is, man, we got ten pounds of stuff in a really little bag here. Not much we can do about it. I, I'm just, I know the applicant himself is not here, but it just, somehow we need to keep this place a little cleaner. He's gonna put some money into it, but I'm just afraid it could be, degrade further, too, with all these trucks and stuff, although he's had trucks, but anyway, no sense going into that, because not real happy.
Yeah, I think, you know, cleaning up some of the landscaping and things, I think, will make a big difference toward.
Yeah, the, there was actually landscaping that was proposed on an old site plan that was, that I tried to replace to-
From nineteen, that was from nineteen thirty-two.
Sixty-two, I think, but it, it looked like it was done on a napkin, too, but it was, it was also before they moved Mancha, uh, moved Manchester Road.
Right, before the arterial, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that affected things. And it's, you know, it's just the landscaping is overgrown through the fence, it's just the, the rat's nest right there right now, so that-
Yeah, and then the vacant building next door doesn't help any of that either.
Steve, you just, in the, oh, I'm sorry.
God bless you.
Eric had a comment.
It, it, just in the interest of, of cleanup, most of the trash enclosures have a pad under them so that the stuff doesn't just sit there and soak in the ground forever.
Okay.
It, does this have, I, I didn't see that in the detail.
Uh, I, I usually put a four-inch pad, a four-inch slab underneath them. It may not be on the detail, if it's not, I'll, I'll double-check the detail and check it.
Okay. Carl, you done?
Yep. All right, I moved that the planning board as lead agency hereby determines that the twenty-eight Manchester Road Truck Rental Site Plan would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret NAGDEC declaration for an unlisted action dated October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen.
Moved and seconded. Call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for twenty-eight Manchester Road Truck Rental Site Plan subject to the following, one through four and five additional comments from tonight on the landscaping and fences.
Including the, showing the four-inch pad and the, all that stuff.
And the four-inch pad and pavement condition.
You got all that there? Got a second? Thank you. Call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oppose or, yeah, your name?
Aye.
Got aye, okay. I oppose, so. Motion carries six to one. That was just. Okay, Steve, you ready?
I'm sorry.
You're good, you're good to go.
Oh, thank you, I was just finishing my information.
No problem.
Yep.
Have a good night, everyone.
South Road Facade Improvements, Wustakis, twenty-four ninety-four South Road. Architectural review for facade improvements, twenty-four ninety-four South Road, Zone BH Highway Business District, point eight five acres, type two action, Ramav Holdings LLC owner. I like it.
Good evening, Don Petroncola from Listical McCormick Van Vors Architecture, representing the applicant. This is an architectural review for facade improvement of an existing single-story storefront facility at twenty-four ninety-four South Road. The existing building is a fairly standard, single-story, it's a white glazed brick with a fake metal mansard roof going up to the top edge of the roof, a flat roof. So we are proposing removing that mansard component and re-cladding the entire building in an EPIS, exterior insulation finish system with cultured stone base up to nine feet at the corners. The cultured stone base is essentially all earth tones, this is a, the manufacturer is cultured stone. It is an Aspen twenty oh eight country ledge stone. The EPIS remainder of the building is done in a desert tan and-
That's enough, sorry.
I believe sand dune. So those are the two primary colors. Exterior lighting is shown. Currently, I believe there are four tenants in the facility, we're showing four entrances right now. So the stone at the corners is nine feet, under the windows about eighteen inches. Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good.
Eric, anybody comments?
Just, I, up to the board, I did point out, you can see, when you go by Route Nine, you do see the ends of the building. The board might wanna consider asking for treatments on the end of something or something.
I agree. Okay. Uh, let's see, we'll start with Nicole.
Okay. I just wanted to know if there's a possibility of redoing the parking lot. There's a lot of potholes and damage to the parking lot. So now that they, they're redoing the actual outside and stuff, I think it would look even worse if even, if it wasn't done, was my comment to you.
Thank you, reasonable comment. Unfortunately, that's not part of our scope of services. If the applicant was here, they'd be able to address, so we'll bring that to the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we would have to defer, then. Peter? Ben? Does Eric have samples?
Yeah, it's up there.
We can leave those samples with you.
I'm okay with it.
It's all right, I'd like to see the whole, the north and south in the back, it's really, I was back there last night, it's disgusting. Can it paint it?
Sure. And in terms of the treatment carrying around the corners, we're talking about north and south as well? Just the corners, maybe wrap the tower detail around on both sides?
Then paint the rest.
Yes.
Yeah, in the back.
Reasonable.
And my other request, and I don't know if this is doable, probably not. People cut through there from Spacken Gill Road, it's a cut-through to Route Nine, and I was there last night. And so I wanted to see if it still went through, which it did, and it's a minefield back there. And the car came the other way. Okay, so now there's two cars and a one-car-wide, whatever you wanna call that back there, so that's certainly a pinch point, if you will. Any way to close that off?
Sounds like we need a civil engineer.
Sounds like. I mean, is the board agree with that? Uh, I mean, is the board agree with that? Do you all know what I'm talking about? You know, and we may have to defer this so you can come back and answer that question.
Oh, absolutely. I think what we actually need is a site plan showing the intent of parking improvements and, you know, to, to curb some of this issue as well as what they intend to do with the parking area, either restriping, repaving, topping, filling in. So we'll bring that back to the applicant.
Prove, you could approve a conditional on the site plan application.
We could. Alright, we could do that. Yeah, the architecture's fine. I mean, I, I would suggest that we approve it, that's a good point from Eric, with a condition that they follow up with a site plan to look at the other things.
That's fine. And the conditions of the improvements around the other four sides of the buildings.
Now, we'll approve that with, with the architectural review. The only thing with the conditional would be come back with the parking lot improvements and the closing off the road in the back somehow and improving it, or whatever they do back there, but, you know, so it's not one of these.
Okay.
Alright.
Sure.
Thank you.
And controlling the trash perhaps makes.
Anybody else wanna cut way in?
I just have one more thing. Um, we, we were talking about this the other day. Is there any way that there can be some type of inlet for the sign is, for the signs? For the, the different, um, places that, that are occupying it right now? Do you know what I'm talking about?
And how are the, how are the signs gonna be?
How are the signs put in place?
Well, the entire area of the, the, the space between the lights is kind of this blank slate for surface application. And we don't know whether or not there's going to ultimately be one tenant in here or four or two or so.
So you wouldn't want to then?
Yeah, I didn't, wouldn't, I necessarily wanna build into the facade something that rigid that.
So you would build inside, build a suit basically inside. So if somebody wanted three-quarters of the building, you'd do that.
Right, that's correct.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so, see, there's no insets for four different signs that way. Okay.
Yeah.
It's not that big a building anyway. Okay, I'm good.
The only comment I have is I'll be able to see what, if I'm late for work now, go and buy this building. The clock, the clock down.
Is that a real clock? Or is it twi-, write twice a day?
It's going to be a real clock and it was an owner request.
Good, that's a nice feature.
So it's, uh, I don't know, you know, it used to be fairly standard and, and quaint and you don't see it very often anymore. When the owner requested it, we kinda went, really?
That's a very nice touch.
It's about time.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Maybe at the bottom of the clock, you can say IBM, remember the IBM clocks, IBM? There, I forget. Okay.
Uh, I move that we accept architecture as presented with conditional on a site plan coming forward to pavement and access condition.
As moved and seconded, we accept the architecture as presented, which will include the painting of the building on three sides as we discussed. And, and as he said, uh, application for a site plan to consider the parking and the driveway behind it, so. I'll call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you. And thank you for, for doing that. You ever drive back there?
Not recently.
The previous owner actually had.
I reached the site plan three different times over the last two or three years.
We got one now. And what got me last night was I come into one way, just, here comes the pizza delivery guy the other way. It's like, oh. I think pizza delivery is gonna take precedence here. Okay, last and certainly not least.
Good evening.
Valley Christian Church, discussion for proposed changes in use within an existing building, uh, from commercial to a religious use. Your site plan application to the planning board for exterior site improvements, twenty Manchester Road Zone ATC Arlington Town Center, two-point-nine-two acres, Drell Freed and Florence Day Freed trustees.
Good evening. Ken Kazameta from LRC. Um, as you've heard from the other applicant over here, we're the neighbors. Um, the church is looking to come in and take over the existing building and renovate it and go through some site plan changes, minor outside. Uh, we have the church here with us today. I'd like Pastor, just to talk a little bit about the church, then we'll talk through the site plan and some of the changes we're proposing.
Yes, good evening and thank you for your time tonight. I commend you all for your, uh, your endurance, uh, for sure.
And thank you for your patience of waiting while we get through everything else.
Our pleasure. So my name is Jamie Faragello. I'm a pastor at Valley Christian Church. Uh, we currently have two campuses. We have one in Hopewell Junction, New York. And, uh, we also have a portable church that we set up Sunday mornings using Regal Cinema in a Galleria Mall. So we're very excited about the, uh, this property here, cause what we're hoping to do is to be able to move our folks who are, uh, in the Regal Cinemas, uh, on Sunday mornings where we gotta set up every morning and tear down before the, the matinee start to move them into this permanent facility. So, uh, thank you, and we certainly do welcome your feedback and your input so that we can make this our, the new home for Valley Christian Church.
Great, thank you.
So, uh, the, the existing property, as you may well know, is pretty much paved. It's actually ends up, uh, after doing the survey, it's two-point-six-one acres of, of land is the actual, and there's two-point-three acres of hard surface there now. So almost the entire site is paved. Um, the church is looking to basically, if I can peel it apart here, uh, restripe the, the area to in- increase a better traffic flow.
Seal and stripe?
Seal and stripe, correct. Where, there will be some spot repairs, uh, in the pavement where necessary to create, to alleviate some of the bird baths and that type of thing. But for the majority, it's just gonna be a sealed and a striped, uh, situation. Um, we're looking to reuse the existing light pole bases, not the poles themselves. Convert them to a pole that meets the current code i- in that area as well. There's, there's one or two that have to come out because they end up falling within a, uh, drive aisle area. We're looking to, just in the front here, uh, we created, uh, an ADA place. Um, we've got, pulling some of the pavement out, creating a little green area in there. There'll be a little depression for stormwater, will end up connecting some of the roof leaders, uh, in there, uh, most likely, and then connect it to the existing storm system. Uh, there'll be a bench and a bike rack, so we are looking at trying to accommodate some of that pedestrian access. There's going to be, we worked with staff in our, our pre-meeting discussion about, uh, manipulating people from Manchester into the site. So we ended up putting a, uh, striped area just off the side on the existing pathway. Truck turn, truck movements around the back for fire access. Uh, currently, it's just kinda haphazardly, uh, around the building. We're restricting it to one way, so it ended up creating a one-way flow out. Uh, we are creating a loading. There is no real loading other than a few chairs here and there, that type thing, that, but the church does have a van occasionally. Over here, the other idea is intentionally, potentially, uh, looking at getting an outreach van to bring people and people here that don't necessarily have vehicles. So that would become a future area for that, uh, if that does occur. So that's really the limit of the site plan work. Um, we've talked to both the water and sewer departments. The existing water and sewer connections that are in the buildings are adequate for what we're proposing. Uh, we end up with a hundred and sixty-two spaces with, per the code, one per four, we end up with about sixty, six-hundred-and-forty-eight seats. That's what we're proposing, uh, in the church area, in the congregation. I'll turn it over to Joe from Steve Tinkelman's office.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joseph Loufe from Tinkelman Architecture. I'd just like to briefly go over our proposed elevation design. We've been working closely with the church, uh, to get a, you know, on the early programming stages and to really get a, a sense of the image that they're looking to portray. Um, so right now, you could see the, the existing building is, you know, monotone brick facade, um, with this horizontal canopy, uh, going across the front there. Um, we're, we're planning on keeping the existing structure the way it is. We're gonna be replacing the canopy. Um, however, the brick facade's gonna be staying, uh, proposing to paint it, and then along this, uh, facade here on the side, we wanna alternate with the painted brick and some horizontal siding. Um, and again, it was just about the, the image and brightening up the facade, um, with the, the light colors and then, um, this sort of, sort of corner piece here is, is the tower, um, which has a, you know, slight abstract reference to a crucifix there, um, but it, it's not, you know, in your face. It's not on a steeple, uh, of a traditional church. So, and we also are proposing to inset the facade there, um, to give a little covered walkway area and also a place for the church to congregate and to discuss and meet afterwards. Um, and that's basically where we're, we're standing now. We're gonna be replacing the roof with standing seam, uh, metal roof, um, and building up these facade portions to enhance the entrance of the church.
What do you plan on doing in the rea-, the rear? There's a couple of loading docks and some, I drove behind it.
I did forget. That's one of the things I did forget. Uh, we did talk, uh, we are looking at, uh, taking off that rear loading dock cause it is needed, uh, and creating some parking in there. Um, we, we'll, we'll look at it as a phased, uh, section for that part because the church, there's quite a bit of renovations that are involved in the interior of this building. Um, so the funds that are available are gonna be focused on the inside for the immediacy. And then as they progress and go for campaigning, if that is available, then we would look to remove that off the back immediately. Or it might take a little time to do that. But it would probably get cleaned up in, at least in the interim, uh, at least so it is consistent with the exterior in the area.
Good. Maybe with the break in the fence that goes through to next street, was it Davis or whatever?
Yeah, we're, we're not planned to go through that.
Is that open today or is that?
There's a fence there, uh, and it's gonna remain.
Closed?
Yes.
Okay. My understanding is people come through there to go over to the convenience store back and forth, so it must be.
One of the things that we are gonna do is we are gonna talk to the police department, uh, as we start to progress just to see the, their take on whether that's an appropriate thing to leave open, create a mangate, cause the church wants to be, you know, open to the community if there's people that wanna walk back there. But if it becomes something that, you know, the police department or other agencies would, would rather not see open, then we'll, you know, work with that as well.
Um, couldn't you end up with a better traffic circulation if you were to sort of turn the building so it's perpendicular Manchester Road?
We're gonna do that. We just, we rotate property lines. You would just, well, no.
No, just, just square off the parking lot. Move the road. Your choice. Anybody questions, comments? Yeah, Peter?
I have a question for the pastor. Uh, I belong to the Grange and we got our, the Granger, uh, newspaper recently and they had a few stories about faith, hope, and charity. And the story about, uh, faith was there were, the town was in a terrible drought and the pastor asked everyone to come in and pray for rain. And when the pastor looked out at the congregation, do you know how he determined who had the most faith? Everyone carrying an umbrella.
Is there a question? That's good. You can, you, and you, and you can use that if you want, or not. Any other comments?
I mean, my comment, I guess we, we just learned that a lot of that fence is on your property, so are you planning to address anything there or help? Like I suggested, coordinate the landscaping in that area.
There is an existing trees between us and the fence, and I, actually, one of the things I do wanna look at is, is the other applications survey because I wanna make sure they're consistent with ours and the boundary on that side.
Yeah, on, on that side, it, it's hard to see because it's, they're covered up, but there, there are at least three large trees that are dead. They're just tall stumps basically that should have been taken down years ago. Um, so, yeah, but the fence clearly belongs to, yeah.
This property. The fence is on our property. Correct. We had no intention of going around because we were trying to keep whatever vegetation is there. And by going in to get the fence out and to put a new fence line in there, everything between us and the fence would have to get wiped out.
Okay.
Are you planning on any kind of a sign out along the street?
We were planning on a sign, I believe, up front, a monument. We haven't gone through the details.
What was, what was in this building before?
It was an A and P years and years.
Then it was town court.
It sat going in for a long time.
Yeah, it's a long time.
More recently, pro-, um, state probation was in there.
Probation is still in it.
Probation or jury?
It's still in it?
Probation is still in it, right, yeah.
So, I can't see the, the original picture, so the tower or the kind of steeple of sorts is going to be added?
Yes.
Oh, you are.
There is, there is no top. The, the existing top is, is kind of roughly in this realm of this, if you look at the, that's the existing roof line. So the parapet is gonna come up across it.
Okay.
Am I correct?
And then from a, from a congregant attendance standpoint, like, so you have, you'll have enough capacity? Cause I know you, you get a good attendance at the Regal Cinemas and in your location in Hopewell Junction, so.
Yeah, one of the things, uh, that we, we usually will have done even in Hopewell, like now we'll have two gatherings there. And parking has always been a, a very big nemesis to us. We have a hundred and three spaces on-site now, uh, in Hopewell. Of course, the Galleria Mall, there's, it's almost unlimited, right? Um, so if it ever became a capacity issue here, we would just have another service. We, you know, another time to meet.
One other item I wa-, did wanna add that the pastor reminded me, uh, to, is, uh, part of parking, uh, the concern over just having it all striped is they do have attendance. There's six to eight volunteer attendants and vests and everything to help people and guide people around. That's the way they do it in their church now. That would be something they'd be carrying over here. So every service does have people beforehand, helping new, new guests come, where they're parked, where to go, that type of thing.
And the majority of your, is Sunday, correct? I don't know, or, yeah, so most of the week, this would be pretty quiet.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, in Hopewell, we do have a Thursday night gathering, and we found that thirty-seven percent of folks work weekends. So we wanted to, you know, create an opportunity for people to be able to come out and worship, uh, on, on an other than weekend day. So could that happen here? It's possible that we might do a Thursday night, but we don't see that, you know, immediately.
Nicole?
No, not at this.
Pretty much free form, you know. You had mentioned at the, the meeting we had with staff, uh, in the summer, uh, program for kids. Was it the summer?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, that's one of our goals is to be able to have like a summer camp across the, the whole summer for, to open it up to the community.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea. It's a great location and a good reuse of a building. Is that currently on tax rolls?
I think so.
You think it is?
I think it is.
Is it currently on the tax rolls? You don't know. You don't need to know. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, probation's a tenant there. I think it's privately owned, so I'm, I'm gonna say, yeah, likely it is that it, that it is.
I don't know.
I don't know. Um, Ken, so, uh, going forward, you're, are you intending to, I mean, the deadline for November is Monday.
Yeah, so, um, currently where we stand and the reason we're here is the church is in the final negotiations of purchase of the building. And our goal was to hopefully get feedback so that we can help guide the church on costs and expenses and potential site work as well as the building facade so that we can help them wrap around a budget. And then if that's still under what works for them, then they're gonna proceed with closure. We'll likely be submitting in November for a December meeting would be our next plan.
I think, I think the tenor of the board is positive. So I think it's, it's very good.
And the other thing that we, and I know we talked about this in some of our offline conversations, the, um, the sign standards for the ATC district, uh, for wall signs and pre-standing is, is pretty stringent. Um, just, uh, if you're intending to go forward with the signage that you're showing on the wall sign, uh, both on the tower, it looks like a logo of some kind, and on the front, that will require a variance. So, and we'll, we'll have to talk about that going forward.
Thank you.
Also picking up on what Peter said. Is there gonna be an umbrella rack, you know, for those rainy days? People put their wet umbrella. Okay, just checking.
That's it.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Looks good.
It's getting late. We get a little punchy, you know? Well, we've had meetings not with this, all these people. We've had meetings that went to one o'clock in the morning, so this isn't too bad.
It's been some long ones.
Just gonna bring Al and Matty Cory back?
You know, I, let's hope so, right? Yeah, Al and Matty were, gosh, I, I was with them for, for many years, probably back in the early eighties through ninety. Yeah, I saw their kids grow up. Yeah, Al actually taught my middle son how to play guitar.
Really?
Yeah.
They live next door to us, before they moved.
Yeah, Myers Corners Road there. Yeah, thank you.
Let's see if they want to.
No, I'll make a motion we adjourn the meeting.
Terminate.
Terminate.
Oh, terminate. Sorry. Let's go home.
Moved and seconded, we terminated the meeting. All's a favor. Moved in second, we terminated the meeting, those in favor? Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion carries seven zero, thank you. Hope you all have fun.